Well, we can start now. Alithia, do we have all of our commissioners on?
Um, not quite yet. I see they're still joining.
Okay, let's give them a couple of more minutes.
Okay. Chanita, were we able to get Commissioner Talafaro?
He should be joining shortly.
Thanks.
Okay, it's 101. We're going to get started. Good afternoon. My name is Dionne Bussi Reader. Happy New Year to all of you all who we have not had an opportunity to see yet. Um, I call this meeting to order. The time is now 1:01 PM. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority being held today, January 12th, 2022. This meeting is being held via web video conferencing. And again, the time is now 1:01. If you are not speaking, we're asking that you please mute your line. Um, I would like to just take a moment of silence for all of us who is really still stuck in this horrible pandemic. Um, for the families that we know are still struggling with the illnesses and for all of our members that are associated with the housing authority. Let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. Today, our agenda is our regular agenda. We have invited members of the public to speak. We have a list that we will actually um go down and Alithia will help me complete that. Um, just want to make sure we read our virtual decorum statement. The Board of Commissioners welcomes constituents' input on matters of public concern and offer you today an opportunity to express your views, including spirited debates of DCHA's decision by its management and this board. During the public testimony portion of every meeting, however, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of decorum to allow the board to complete the business before it. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asks that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak and that you do not use the chat to comment when it's not your time to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct or loud, threatening, or abusive language during board meetings. This includes loud outbursts and shouting during times where you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from the virtual meeting immediately. Serious or repeated violations will prevent you from speaking at future board meetings for a period of 60 days. We appreciate your interest in this matter before today. Thank you in advance for adding a body by these rules of conduct. At this time, I'll ask for a roll call to determine our call.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Council?
So, Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Hoffman?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland? Commissioner Strickland, you're muted.
President, can you hear me?
Thank, thank you. Yes, heard you that time. Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Gostrey? Commissioner Van Gostrey, you're muted.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ortiz-Gow?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Falchakio?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Talafaro? No response. And uh, Madam Chair, Bussy Reader? Thank you. Madam Chair, you have 11 commissioners present. You have a call.
Thank you. I would like to first uh welcome our newest board members to our board and give them both an opportunity to introduce themselves, Commissioner Lee and Harris, um and say a few words about the work that they've done and why this is so important for them to serve the residents. Please, Commissioner Lee, and then we'll ha- hear from Commissioner Harris.
Good afternoon. I'm excited to be joining the Board of Commissioners. Um, I currently work at the Minkiti Group. I'm the Senior Vice President of the Capital and Investments Team, and I've spent the past 25 years working in the investment management and treasury management um space, um including overseeing the uh real estate portfolio for the Maryland State Retirement Agency, as well as executing treasury strategies for large organizations here in DC, uh Washington Metro, Pepco, Amtrak. And again, I'm excited to be joining the uh Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Um, my name's Ronnie Harris. Um, I'm currently employed at AmeriHealth Caritas District of Columbia. I'm an account executive in the Provider Relations Department. Been with the company for over 13 years. Um, and I'm a district, long-term district resident. And I am very excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you both, and welcome again. We appreciate you serving. Um, I would like the Commissioners to consider the minutes of December the 8th, 2021, the board meeting. Um, are there any comments or changes to the uh minutes? There are none. I would accept the motion to accept. I think you said something, Commissioner Strickland, but we can't hear you.
Said motion.
Thank you.
A second.
Okay, Alithia?
All in favor? Yeah, no roll call. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes of the December 8th, 2021 board meeting are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I will turn it over to our Executive Director for her report.
Madam Chair, and um thank you Commissioners. Um, Happy New Year to everyone, uh to DCHA staff and to members of the public. Um, we'll be putting up a slide deck shortly that I will through. Um, actually, my first two slides were to welcome um our new Commissioners. You can go ahead and show, um Rachel, for people who didn't uh get a chance to see their smiling faces and a little bit of their background, which they just introduced themselves. So, um, we're welcome to um Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Lee. Um, next, I do want to introduce some new members of um my team. And they are here, and I will ask them to also quickly introduce themselves. Um, first is Deputy Executive Director Victor Martinez. And Victor, if you would introduce yourself and a brief bit about your background.
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Members, Director Donald, and everyone else in this video. Um, my name is Victor Martinez. I've been involved with public housing and affordable housing since 1995 um as a consultant, uh as well as various capacities of the two largest public houses in the nation. From IT to finance, from procurement to operations, and just about everything in between. Uh, I consider myself a public servant, and I'm very happy to be able to help the families find uh find a uh safe and decent place where they can call home. Uh, looking forward to working with Director Donald and all of you to improve the lives of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Victor. Um, next up, we have Nona Eath. Um, Nona is our Senior VP over uh the Property Management Operations. Ms. Eath?
Good afternoon. It is a pleasure to be here today. I have a over 15 years of experience in Public Housing Authority. I've worked at uh both small and large agencies, uh operating both Section 8 and public housing programs and family self-sufficiency. I am excited to be here to work with, improving our operations and the lives of our families. Uh, look forward to working with each and every last one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, um Latwida Smires, who is the Senior Vice President for Housing Choice Voucher Programs and um our ECOT operations. You go to the next slide, Rachel, and um Ms. Smires.
Good afternoon. Um, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Members, Director Donald. Um, I'd like to thank you guys for having, for me being able to uh have this opportunity to work in at the District of Columbia. I'm really excited. I too have 15 years of experience of working in the Housing Choice Voucher Program, Long-Term Public Housing, and with RAD. Um, I am always consider myself a public servant, and this is what I'm here to do, is to make sure that we are serving the public and um doing, streamlining it in a way that will be efficient and effective for our board, um for the board and our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say that the three, um our three new team members all joined on December 20th, and they have jumped right in. We've had some very um intensive onboarding for them with um briefings of all of our departments, as well as our um, including going through, we did a virtual tour of all of our properties and a look ahead at all of our capital programs. Um, both Victor and Nona were um tested last week with the first, this the uh first snow. Um, I think it was, it certainly surprised me. I don't know if it would surprise any Commissioners, but um that we don't have a snow plan. Uh, was shocked to find that out and um, but we had snow. So, the two of them went um completely took over. Um, Victor actually was driving around at 5:30 in the morning looking at properties and um engaging Nona in quickly putting together a plan um with our property management operations team, setting up reporting structures and some preliminary protocols. They will be developing a um, a, a, a more comprehensive snow plan, inclement weather plan, as well as continuity of operations. But the fact is that um they had to spring into action, and while we had a few delays and a few reports, for the most part, I think that we did an extremely good job. And um the reports that were coming from our various properties were um were largely positive, and we also had to even spring into action on a couple of um our mixed assets where our um partners were not um as responsive as they needed to be. So, thank you for that. Um, Ms. Smires has also jumped in and is fielding a lot of constituent issues that are coming through Housing Choice Voucher um and ECOT, and um they're, well, bringing their skills and experience into uh into this agency as they learn what's going on at DCHA and and in the District of Columbia. But their ability to apply their experience um is allowing them to ramp up quickly. So, you will hear more from them as they take on some of our major priorities, and they'll be participating and and doing briefings to the board um as we move forward. Welcome. Okay. So, I wanted to give you all a quick um update on COVID-19. Um, we, like everyone else in the country, and certainly in the District of Columbia, have experienced um the, the surge with Omicron. We've had, uh we have 57 employees um who tested positive between December and January 1, and an additional 30 just since January 1st. And another um 77 employees who are quarantined because they either have been exposed to coworkers or family members. So, while the reports we're getting is that um for the most part, the um employees' symptoms are mild and have been managed, and I haven't gotten any reports of anyone having to be hospitalized. But certainly, this is having an impact on our workforce. Um, we had also this scenario during the, the snowfall last week. So, a lot of people who were out and were having to make adjustments. Uh, one thing that I decided uh was important to do was to move us to a virtual platform. At first, um we were just through January the 10th, and then um after the 1st, when we saw that the the numbers are still continuing to um climb, I decided to move us through January 31st. Another precaution that we're going to take is that we are going to require our employees to get the COVID-19 um vaccination and booster shots. Um, and before, I'll remind you that we asked employees to report their vaccination status, and those who were not vaccinated or who couldn't document that or did not have a legitimate um waiver that they would test weekly. And that's what we were doing from um, I believe, October through the end of December and um and um I am proud to report that over 600 of our employees um are, have, have documented that they are um vaccinated and boosted, and that's really great. And we also have onsite um clinics where people could get their shots, um both booster shots and vaccinations, as well as testing. Um, we have a little over 100 employees and um maybe close to 115 who um still have not documented vaccination um status. So, we will be as we um, as the regulations for implementing the vaccine requirement um gets finalized through our unions. So, we are, believe that these are prudent things to do to keep everybody safe. Um, uh, one thing that we, I want to do with these uh briefings to the board and to the public is to just kind of give you a heads up about things that are coming forward. And we do have um our moving to work plan that governs our operations and sets forth our agenda as um endorsed by HUD. We have several amendments that we are putting forth to um our board and ultimately to HUD um that will allow us to move forward on several critical projects. And we did have a public hearing um last week, and we will have another hearing if we have not already with our um citywide advisory board. Those are um required as part of HUD, but also they're important constituents. So, um, we have four items that are part of the MTW plan. Amendments, um Henson Ridge, which um, and all of these, we will go into detail um at a board meeting, a special board meeting that will be held on, I believe, we just scheduled that for January. It's the week of January 24th, I think it's the 27th. But those notices will go out. There are some time-sensitive items, but these are the four um items that will be discussed more in detail. And so, Henson Ridge, I'm sorry, uh for those who are not watching um um somewhere on the phone, Henson Ridge, um our North Capitol, uh 1133 North Capitol, our headquarters building, um Langston Terrace, and then Berry Farm. And these are all specific aspects of each of these projects. Okay, go to the next one. Um, we also um have upcoming board actions um that I wanted to tee up for the board and for the public. On um, we have the, our Operations Committee, which is on January the 27th. And there we have several resolutions um that one, two, for regarding our fire alarm and security services, elevator maintenance and repair services, mold testing and remediation. And then uh a resolution to affirm um our contract for legal services for account collections. I think that's one um set of services under our legal contract. So, these are all um pretty much routine contractual services that come up for rebidding or renewal and that we have to take before the board. Um, our DEV MOG, which is our Development and Modernization Committee, that primarily reviews um development items or capital items. On January the 26th, we will have the um a resolution regarding Langston Terrace restoration and a master plan. We also have on um January 26th is our Resident Services um Committee. There are no resolutions before that committee, but that is a committee hearing and that um um addresses um issues pertaining to our residents and is chaired by Commissioner Van Gostrey. We um you can go ahead. I'm sorry. I mentioned, I already mentioned the um Emergency Board Meeting. We do have some on DC City Council Oversight Hearings, and this slide is outdated. We just got late breaking news yesterday that the Committee on Housing and Executive Administration, we were originally scheduled to have our oversight hearing on January 27th. Now that hearing will be just for the public. There's another Committee on Human Services on February 24th that is also for public witnesses. Our, our oversight hearing um from the government standpoint is on March the 3rd, and it will be before Joint Committee on um Housing and Executive Administration. That's primarily the committee that is chaired by Councilmember Anita Bonds, who has oversight primarily for our capital um funding and um also um some funding for our Office of Public Safety. And then the um Human Services Committee, just chaired by Councilmember Brianne Nadeau over our Housing Choice um voucher, local um voucher allocations. So, um, those hearings, of course, are open to the public, and um we just want to make sure that everybody is aware of the dates. Okay, I want to shift now to some employee events that we had. Um, we are, of course, still doing everything virtually. I understand that these events in the past, this is our year-end employee recognition program that normally would be a nice affair with um lots of um of fun and celebrations and um food and 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 other fun things. But of course, we are now, um, we're still virtual. But I do want to acknowledge that we have a number of really dedicated DCHA employees and those who um achieved many years of service, and I, I'm going to read their names out. They're not that many, but they are really, really um stalwarts who've been with DCHA for many years. So, those who hit their 25-year mark is Alicia Robinson. And I don't have the name, all of the divisions that everyone is affiliated with. I know some of these people, but not everyone, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna mess it up, but I will shout out their names. Alicia Robinson, um, Ramhead, Ramlet Watkins, Diane Nelson, Keith Kendall, Alice Revelle, Willie Jenkins, um Ronald Fowler, Avrun Gupta, Wanda Barnes, John Oliver, Brian McBride, and Albert Coley. I hope those names people recognize and um give them um their kudos for being part of the DCHA family. We also have a few employees who've been here for 30 years. Angel Reynolds, um Richard Brown III, Leroy Johnson, Ricardo Spate, Joanne Rainey, Carlos Morales, and David Pratt. And, yes, there are some who have been here for 35 years. Elvira Johnson-Balding, Tyrone Johnson, Owen Robinson, Larry Thompson, Anthony Brackett, and Barbara Boots. So, we want to thank them, and we look forward to being able to celebrate them um in person after we get through this pandemic. Okay, I'm wrapping up here. We did have some employee events over the holidays um that continued our um days of service. Our annual gift of love, where we um toy distribution of, to over 3,000 kids. Um, that happened in the second week of December. We provided over 8,000 toys. Those toys were provided to us um to, from a partner of wider circle. It's been providing them for many, many years, and we greatly appreciate them. We hosted four pop-up toy giveaways. We also included our voucher families, and um we dropped off toys, bike scooters, at some of our, our smaller properties. Our, some of our smaller properties had raised their hands and said that they never get included in the big event. So, we made sure that we uh accounted for their families and that we had gifts um and to give away to them. January will end the season of giving with the coat giveaway. It's still time to contribute, I understand. And here's some pictures of some of our events. Um, also, we continue with resident engagement, which is really, really important on in all of these. Um, I participate and have participated in um every um all of these activities except for one, I think. Um, but I was at um Potomac Gardens, a family senior residence meeting. We had, um, that was in-person. We had Lincoln Heights Richardson Dwellings, um that was a virtual meeting. Langston Terrace was the one I didn't get to participate in. And then we did our virtual property tour, which was just giving background information on all of our properties to our new team members. Um, we have partnerships that are really, really important. Um, we can't do this work alone, so I'll end on that note. I mentioned a wider circle um who donates toys um for our gift of love. We've had Soul for Souls and Children's Charity Foundation uh donated coats as part of our coat drive. We have a um, a, a legal fair for our DCHA customers. We also have a partnership with the University of the District of Columbia to kick our virtual classes in January and um that we encourage our residents and our um Housing Choice Provider recipients to uh participate and to get certifications for, um, in this case, medical office administrative professional um um certifications, hospitality, and I, and IT fundamentals. Um, our partnership with the Department of Employment Services is focused on our um property management training for our apprenticeship training, under our apprenticeship training program. It's a six-month program for 20 participants who will then um be certified in leasing and other um property management certification credentials who would be eligible for hire, either if we have positions on board or for, through our property management partners. And then there was a, also a holiday, virtual holiday party um hosted by our developer, um Poa for um at Berry, for Berry Farm um residents. I know that there are other events and partnerships that we don't always capture, so this is not a complete list, but um some selected highlights. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Executive Director. Good report, good work that you all are doing, and congratulations to all of those employees who have been here that long. Your commitment and steadfastness to this organization is definitely appreciated. So, moving forward with our agenda.
Can I ask a question about the?
I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand. I apologize, Commissioner Slover.
Um, I, I appreciate the report. Um, I wanted to focus a second on the uh, the agenda items for the emergency meeting. Um, and the um
Emergency meeting? You're talking about for the 20s, the meeting we're, we're scheduling, uh, on 27th?
Yeah, because they were part of her presentation.
Okay. Go ahead and hear.
Um, there were four items that you listed that would be um part of the amendment to the MTW agreement.
Yes.
Um, has the board been briefed on all four of those things?
The board has not been briefed on those, and we will be providing briefing, extensive briefing materials to the board um within the next week. And it will be available.
There won't be a committee meeting or anything on it. It'll just be, you'll just provide us documents?
That's correct, unless the board wants to have a brown bag, but I'm not sure if that's the timing will allow for that. But, yes, we will provide documents, and we do have several committee meetings that come before then, so the board can decide if they want to have more discussion at your two emergency meetings.
I mean, traditionally, so this has been a longstanding issue with the board where, you know, a couple of times in the last couple of years, we've been very clear that our expectation is that for things that are coming to resolution, that they come through a committee and be reviewed by a committee. Um, and so, that's why I'm asking. And maybe you were not aware that was what the board wanted. Um, so I just wanted to flag that as an issue.
Okay, so noted. I was not aware that was a requirement or, or preference of the board. So, we will circle back to you in terms to make sure that we are giving you adequate briefing on the um, the items that are in the MTW um amendment.
Because the, the his, just so you know, the history of it was that, that we got into a habit a couple of years ago of resolutions appearing the night before meetings that the board, nobody in the board had reviewed. And then we were asked to vote on them the next day, and so that was becoming a habit. And in, 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 in an attempt to avoid that, in the future, we put those guardrails in. Um, so I think it's important for the board to have, you know, some review process prior to that.
I certainly understand, Commissioner, and, and I will say, one thing I have committed to this board and I have done. to make sure that you get all your board materials at least a week in advance. And I think I've been consistent with that. And I don't think I have raised my hand for an emergency board meeting. And I know that that is something to be reserved for very special circumstances that are time-sensitive. And in this case, we do have some items that are time-sensitive. And we will justify the need for that. But we do have two weeks out and we'll time to get the board, the materials. And I will make myself available with my staff to brief the board in any way that, either individually or in one of the committee meetings that is leading up to that special meeting.
I appreciate it. And before we jump into the, to the, to the agenda, I wanted to revisit something from last month. We passed a resolution on to extend the right to negotiate on the Greenleaf transaction. Subsequently, and then during the meeting, I asked the question of what was being authorized? And subsequent to that meeting, we passed some back and forths. And I just want to get clarity. And I've requested from the General Counsel an opinion on what Resolution 2020 and subsequent Resolution 2123 authorizes the Executive Director to do? Because when we approved Resolution 2020, the then General Counsel made it very clear that that resolution did not authorize the execution of the master development agreement. However, it appears that the current opinion is that it, that the resolution does. And so what I'm hoping to get from the General Counsel, the current General Counsel, is where the authority comes from to execute the MDA, as is being described today. So hopefully, we can get that. I just want to make sure I, my request was registered and, and because I never got a response from my email.
Appreciate you, Commissioner Slover, as I shared with you in our brown bag session. We're going to do these five-minute rounds, and you just concluded yours on this particular topic. And the staff will have the materials uploaded on the 19th of January for the 27th meeting. Also, to your point earlier, we could discuss this at the Operations Committee meeting that will occur at 11:00 a.m. and placed in front of the board meeting. But thank you, and we'll make sure you get those answers that you asked for, and everything will be out by the 19th. While I'm in this round, do we have any other questions for the Executive Director? Thank you, Commissioner Slover.
I actually do need to respond to something because what you just laid out is another thing that the board was very reluctant and decided they did not want to do, which was be briefed on resolutions and then five minutes later be asked to approve them. So there was some time, there was supposed to be some time between a committee meeting and then being asked to vote on it. So
Committee is actually, Operations Committee is on the 27th. And then we just decided that the meeting would be on the 28th? Or is it on the 27th?
27.
We're having it on the 27th. But prior to that, I stated that you would have the material by January 19th. So that will give you more than a week to actually produce, review the material and be clear on the next steps. So you'll have everything of the Diligent Board, Commissioner Slover, by January 19th. So that's resolving your issue. Commissioner Strickland, please proceed.
Makes sense to move that Ops meeting up a week? Because I just looked at what the Executive Director put. There's four resolutions that's going to come on the 27th. At the same time, there's an emergency board meeting as well. I see you shaking your head, no, Rachel, Ms. Joseph. Is that not, was that not, did I look at that wrong?
So yes, there are four things coming to operations resolutions, but that would then be voted on in February's board meeting. And the emergency board meeting that's scheduled for the 27th, they'll have two different resolutions that weren't on that agenda as of right now, unless, unless the board's asking us to do so.
Get that part, but going through four resolutions is not a quick thing, you know? So you're basically saying from 11, say, we get through those resolutions quickly, say, 30 minutes each, or say, 20 minutes each, and then have a board meeting that's going to take some time. That takes the entire day, you know what I mean? So why rush it if we don't have to? Move the Ops meeting up a week? That way, we have time if the, maybe move it to the 20th or so. And then we still vote on those same Ops resolutions in February. But then that gives time for that emergency meeting where everything is not just super condensed. That's just my thought. Everyone may think of it differently, but I wasn't saying that we vote on, that those are voted on at the emergency, but just give them some space.
Committee, we will, we will come back and check on the dates and call the other members of the committee and see if we can move that Operations Committee meeting up. And I'll need to make sure from our procurement team that we have the procurement, that everything is ready so that we would be able to get to you all in advance. So can you give us a minute to kind of check on the logistics for that, get your point?
And Director, Commissioner, are you willing to either forward to the week before? Or could it potentially be the week after the emergency board meeting?
Time before the actual board meeting to thoroughly discuss things. You know, that's our biggest thing, like Commissioner Slover talked about. We've been boxed in with the 24 hours notice on something needs to vote on. And the committee structure is, although it's not perfect yet, we're working on it. But still, that gives us time, especially for things that aren't really rushed, that let's just face them out versus having, you know, a day of the 27th that will probably be longer than today. You know what I mean? Doesn't make real, make like a lot of sense if we don't have to do it that way. That's just my two cents on that.
We'll have Alithia follow up and, and make the schedule make sense. But there would be a week in between. If we, if we moved it to the first week of February, we would still have a week before the next board meeting. So we'll, we'll, we'll circle back.
I'm open either way, and thank you for that suggestion too, Rachel. That either way, it, you know, as long as it's, I just don't want to condense it all on that one day if we don't have to. That was my intent.
Are there any other questions for the Director regarding her report before we move to resolutions?
When will we get the Greenleaf thing from the General Counsel?
Director Don, did you hear Commissioner Slover?
I think he was the General Counsel. Not less than, not more than a week from today.
We can't hear you, Andrea, I'm sorry.
By next Wednesday.
Someone interpret what Andrea said, I didn't hear her.
He said it'll be, we will get a response by next Wednesday. No later than.
Later than next Wednesday.
And I'm assuming you won't execute the MDA between now and Wednesday?
Remember, we got a, a, an extension on that. And we have to come back to the board until the end of February, the Dev Mod meeting. So we're, there's plenty of time. You're talking about Greenleaf, correct?
Greenleaf, yeah, I just want to make sure.
That wouldn't happen until after, if we get, that was part of the board action allowing us to extend. So there's no MDA happening before next week.
Never know. You don't ask.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions? I can't see any hands if there are. Just want to make sure, Alithia, are there any other questions for the Commissioners? For the Director? Okay, well, we're moving on to resolution, our board resolutions. So we're proceeding now, resolution. Board members, you had an opportunity to discuss this. Moving on to Resolution 2201. Yes, Commissioner Hoffmeier? You're muted.
According to the agenda, we are first hearing public comment on the resolutions.
There was no one that signed up for public comment specifically on these resolutions.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're moving forward, Resolution 2201. Correct, Director Don, I'm making sure we're on it. We're moving forward, we're Resolution 2201.
Yes, I'm sorry, but either Andrea or John Stringfield, read the resolution. Or read the title of the resolution. Is that, that's what we do with the board meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon, my name is John Stringfield. I am the interim director of the Office of Capital Programs. And the Resolution 22-01 is for Construction Project Management Services. And the purpose of this resolution is to authorize the execution of a contract for Construction Project Management Services for the District of Columbia Housing Authority.
This is Stringfield, I think you gave the second resolution first. So I think we're looking at Resolution 2201 to authorize closing documents for the acquisition of the Capers Senior Building?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. Are you going to provide the description of the resolution and the board action to undertake the board action?
Yes.
Okay.
Correction, these, DCHA acquisition of Capers Senior. The purpose of this resolution is for the Board of Commissioners to authorize the execution of an amendment to the annual contributions contract for the transfer of the Arthur Capers Senior One to a new owner entity, Capers Senior LLC, that will be created under the Capitol Housing Partners LLC.
Now we'll take board action.
I have, I have some questions.
Yes, we'll entertain the questions.
Here are several of my questions. We know that this is a mixed
Commissioner Van Gaster, re-announce yourself for the record, please. I'm sorry.
This is Commissioner Ron Gaster, Family Commissioner. We acknowledge that Capers is a mixed finance. And we also understand that you want an amendment to the ACC. Why are we amending the ACC? And how would that impact us financially? Whether or not there would be an impact financially? Also, I want for the record, so the record to reflect that we had a discussion about the mixed finance properties, which would be Kentucky Court, Capers, any of the Hope Six. We still have an issue with them, that the public housing residents don't have the right to vote in the commissioner election or in a, or to have a resident council due to the fact they have association. So if that's the case, because of maybe how the mixed finance ownership partnership and the elements work, then it is time for this housing authority to make sure that there are two seats on every mixed finance community, a public housing representative and an ACVP representative, along with a nav
Commissioner Van Gaster, somehow we lost you. Okay, we're going to give our opportunity to come back. Do we have any other questions regarding this resolution?
Receive rights from this single-member district to help with the subsufficient part of the housing authority mission? Did I use up my five minutes?
No, we actually lost you a little bit. I think part of what you were saying, we lost, I'm sorry.
Okay, so let me put you back on track. That, first of all, Andrea, you need to sign a parole legal to find out whether or not my constituents of public housing or the constituents of the Housing Choice Voucher Program rights has been violated under the District of Columbia Housing Authority and the CFR. Public housing residents do not organize or have the right to organize on any of these properties, nor do they have the right to vote in any of your elections. And that has been one of my pet peeves ever since I came on board. And every, every director, other than you, Director Donald, you did say that you would look into seeing whether or not they can have the right to vote in their, having seats on their association. So now could you narrow it down to a point in time where you only have a two-year contract? So could you give the board something in writing, maybe the next 30 days, how to proceed with their policy, with their internal policy impacting their violation? Because it is a violation.
Yes, Madam Commissioner, we will look into that. But I'll just say, and I think we, since we just briefed the board in brown bag and a lot of detail, but now we're in the public meeting, and I think we probably, just reading the title doesn't really explain to the public what we're asking the board to do. And this is to acquire the Arthur Capers Senior Building, which has been part of a mixed asset.
Yeah, I understand all that, but you actually want to do this for a building that do not have a resident council.
Yes, ma'am.
The motion have already been passed. Nobody informed them to have a resident council. So we already know that their rights have been violated, and you still want me to help pass this resolution? So what I'm asking you to do is to look into, these are not allegations. I'm saying to you that once this resolution is passed, that within 14 calendar days, a letter is written to all mixed finance communities informing them of your new skill set, that there will begin to have elections for both of those two populations. They will be sitting on your boards and that you would be putting together in those community homeowners, ACVP, and PH group of people to make the decisions so that the representation can be on their boards. It's simple as that, so.
No, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. I understand, and I'm making that commitment to follow up.
But I just remember we're doing amendments. So while we are amending, we need to think of all the mistakes that was already, all the mistakes that was put in the first deal and contract with this mixed finance development.
Yes, and I just wanted to, Madam Chair, if I could just kind of step back. I just wanted to separate the two issues. And I have committed to you, Commissioner Van Gaster, on the record that we will, we'll follow up to the board with our plans for managing the mixed assets, including the issues that you have raised. But I just wanted to step back and make sure that everyone knows we're asking the board to vote on its acquisition of the Arthur Capers Senior Building, which has been, which will now become, if the board approves, part of our portfolio, public housing. This property is part of a larger development that now has reached the end of its low-income housing tax credit cycle that then has made it attractive for the developers to basically walk away and allow us to acquire this building, which is a beautiful building. Many people know that the Arthur Capers Senior Building had been ravaged by fire several years ago. It was completely rebuilt. It's a beautiful building. It's almost fully occupied. It is self-sufficient in terms of its income and operational financial revenue stream. So we think this is a real advantage for us to preserve affordable housing for seniors and allow them to stay they are and to bring this into our portfolio. So that is the purpose of this resolution. It's a great opportunity. The price of this property for us is a mere $70,000, which amounts to some transaction fees. So basically, we're getting the building at no cost. And we are able to continue providing deeply affordable housing to seniors. I wanted to give that context. And to Commissioner Van Gaster's point, since this building will be owned by the housing authority, the residents would be eligible for the same types of services and supports and rights that our public residents, public housing residents have. And we will discuss the resident council and what happens when a new property comes into our portfolio after the election cycle and see if there can be some adjustment for them to have a resident council. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from our Commissioners? Commissioner Slover?
Can you tell us what, what, if there's any additional debt that DCHA will be assuming when they acquire this project? that DCHA will be assuming when they acquire this prop, acquire this project?
John? Stringfield?
No, sir, no, Commissioner. There will not be any additional debt that will be assumed. The agency owns the, currently owns the debt on the property, and that will essentially be zeroed out once we acquire the property. So there will not be any debt service on the property.
I think I, I think I might have asked the question wrong. So the DCHA lend, lend, lended, lent the developer twelve point seven million dollars per this resolution. So that loan is being assumed by DCHA, even though it's our own money. So, so I think it's a bit of a misrepresentation to say we're getting it for seventy thousand one hundred dollars. I think that's causing some consternation because really, we're extinguishing our twelve point seven million dollar loan. Correct?
Correct.
Not giving us the money back.
That's correct.
But I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's still not a good deal. I just want to be forthright that, you know, when something looks strange, we need to describe why. It's because the agency lent the money to the developer. We're the debt holder. We are the major debt holder on the property. So if they were to sell this to somebody else, they, our debt would go with it and that acquirer would have to pay us the money. So the reason it's only seventy thousand dollars is because we've already put twelve point seven million in.
That's correct. Trying.
I, I just, I just want to make sure, you know, it's, it's clear. That's why it's seventy thousand dollars. And so we keep saying it's, it's only seventy, but again, it's, it's not. And so. Is that correct?
That is correct. I think that's.
Do we need to verify that or is that, is that the correct interpretation?
It says it's, we, it says we put six point, it was a six point nine million dollar life tech equity, twelve point seven million dollar soft loan by DCHA and a ninety-nine year ground lease. So we're assuming the ground lease, which is to our cell, which I assume was zero dollars or a dollar a year or something. But really, I just want to make sure on the record is that we're, we're extinguishing twelve point seven million dollars in debt.
That's a correct assumption.
Okay.
I see you, Commissioner Skinner.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, one second. We doing rounds, Commissioner Skinner, so Commissioner Slover has about two more minutes, and then each, I'll come to units.
The other question I have is, what happened to the, what's the status of the hundred and sixty-one federal vouchers? They were issued at the Resolution eighteen thirty when the, when the fire happened. They were emergency vouchers. What's the status of those?
Could you repeat that, Commissioner?
So when the, when the building burned down, the board passed Resolution eighteen thirty, which authorized a hundred and sixty-one federal vouchers to rehouse the tenants in case the developer didn't, which we thought was their obligation. But we put those in place just in case there was a need. Do we know what happened to those hundred and sixty-one vouchers? Were they ever used? Were they not used? Are those the folks that are back in the building? Do we have any, any line of sight into those hundred and sixty-one vouchers that were authorized by Resolution eighteen thirty?
We can get you some correct numbers as to how many of those residents came back, but those vouchers were used to relocate families at the time of the fire?
And were those special vouchers that were issued by HUD versus from our portfolio? I, I can't recall what happened at that moment.
You're correct. We went directly to HUD and asked for allocation for these families.
So those were, those were created, not taken from our portfolio?
Correct.
All right, I think I'm probably out of time, but I was hoping to get in a question about, so the public knows when we're going to be able to finish delivering the, the two hundred and thirty-plus units that we need to deliver.
To stay on topic for this resolution, and then we'll come back to that. Commissioner Skinner, thank you, Commissioner Slover.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to follow up on the question that Commissioner Slover asked in terms of the twelve million dollar loan. So what you're saying is that there were, I know it was quote "soft debt", but you're saying that there was, there were no repayments over the course of fifteen years during the tax credit compliance period?
That's correct, Commissioner Skinner.
Um, if I may interject, Alexander Serna, the developer manager. So the, the actual interest in the, was accrued, and it's set to start getting paid in twenty twenty-three. And it's probably one of the other reasons why the developer wants, wants to sort of not participate in this building. However, the loan would be paid from cash flow. Whether their developer gets the cash flow or any other entity gets the cash flow, the, the debt service will be serviced through cash flow only. Hence, by transferring the property to a different owner, you still receive that cash flow that will go towards the debt service. And also the interest on the debt service there is de minimis as well, so.
Who is responding?
One second.
This is Alexander Serna. Sasha, Miss, Miss Hoffman.
It'd be easier if you identify yourself before he did speak.
I'm sorry, I did, I believe I did, but I apologize. I might have spoke too quick.
So in essence, we're, we're paying ourselves back?
That's correct.
No, we're not paying ourselves back. We're, we're twelve point seven million dollars is, is no more.
Well, we still get the cash flow from the operations, and we wouldn't have gotten the cash flow if we didn't transfer, if we wouldn't, wouldn't transfer the building. So essentially, the cash flow will pay the loan.
It's eighty thousand dollars a year.
Well.
I just want to make sure that it's somehow registered in here that this twelve point seven million dollars.
So, Commissioner Skinner, are you, are you yielding your, you yielding your time to Commissioner Slover?
I'm finished.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our CFO was on. I don't know if he had something to elaborate on this issue. John Sarah?
Hey, Commissioners, this is John Sarah. I'm trying to fix my visual, my camera for a second. So you're right, Commissioner, those, I mean, this loan is, is usually not paid, but normally that's how those deals are structured. Cash flow is minimal, and the interest therein lies with, you know, having tax credits for the investors and then having more affordable housing for the housing authority. So from a fiscal perspective or fiduciary perspective, you're right that twelve point seven will be paid on the long term through cash flow. It still will be on our books, though. So we're not washing it out or, or, you know, canceling that note receivable anytime.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Hoffman?
I'm sorry, Mr. Sarah has confused, has confused me. The loan will be carried on our books as receivable?
Yes, Commissioner, the loan has always been carried as a receivable. It's a long-term receivable. And the way these deals are structured, usually it's structured in a, in a way where there is a minimum cash flow at the end of the deal. As I said, because the investment that we need to get in the form of tax credit, which is basically what we were mentioning in the brown bag, the ten-year period of compliance and, oh, sorry, ten-year period of tax credit and fifteen-year period of compliance, that's essentially what, what is being brought into the project as well as the loan to rehab those properties or sometimes for new construction. So the structure in that sense is always with a minimal cash flow. And those notes, that debt will always be on our books until it's fully paid off, which, yes, from a cash flow perspective, it is eighty thousand. It's going to be a long time to get that money back, but it still will be on our books. But again, that's how these deals are structured. Like, this is not an inconsistency in this scenario.
Thank you. You have any other questions?
No.
Commissioner Council, do you have any questions as it relates to this resolution? Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Harris? Looking at you guys as I move down. Commissioner Van Gogh, sir.
I, I would like for something to be put on the records, and that would be the discussion in which we had about what were the benefits of the expiration of the tax credit to property. Dialogue.
Comment that Commissioner Harris made.
Correct.
That's fine. Commissioner Belcheckio, do you have any comments?
He never made the comment to give us explanation of, about the benefits of the expiration of the tax credit, because the tax credit had expired on this property. That was in brown bag. I mean, that was on my mind. So the same person need to explain for the record, what are the benefits of the expiration of the tax credit, and where did that money go?
The benefits of the tax credit expiration are that the, for the investor and the developer, it's no longer cost beneficial for them or no longer justifies them being in this deal, essentially. And that benefit, that lack of a benefit for the developer and investor becomes a benefit for DCHA and that we're able to acquire the property at the amount of seventy thousand dollars that we're able to purchase it for.
So are we using that model in future deal preferences? So that, since we know there's a model that was a benefactor, benefactor of model to us is all the way that deal was put together. So would you say as we move forward with deals of this nature, that we should use that model? Because we do know what we do is, we get a model of a deal. If that model is working, we work it, and that model doesn't work forever. It only worked for a certain period of time or within cycles.
I'm not exactly sure of, what's the question?
The question is, you saw how the contract of the deal was written. You also review and examine, and you saw that the expiration of the tax credit of the deal was over. I'm sure you've seen that with many deals. However, when it comes with this particular deal, was this a standard practice? Was this something that's done quite frequently? When a housing authority does business with mixed, mixed finance partners, as we did with these particular partners? Remember, none of us would have benefited the, the, and, and thank goodness that all the residents got out of the fire, but with the faulty of the structure, whatever happened, for this to happen, for us to move forward to where we at. So I'm saying, in the near future, when we doing contracts, do we look at contracts that really worked? So that when we are sitting at the table with these contracts, even with the amendment, you want us to amend something? Even with that particular amendment, why is it getting amended? Why wasn't it in there in the first place?
Well, I just, I guess the first thing is, I want to make sure that we're talking about the, the, the resolution to authorize the amendment of our ACC contracts and not the actual purchase.
We're talking about the same resolution. You can't answer a question, just say you can't answer questions. It's okay. It was just said I was asking these questions. And all questions won't be able to be asked because all questions are not interpreted the same. So that's okay. So I just want to rectify, reflect that Commissioner Van Gogh, we wanted to know what were the benefits of the expiration of the tax credit on this particular property? And whether or not in the near future, if this was such a good contract for mixed finance, will we be using this type of model as we move future with other contracts?
I would say if, if we have the opportunity, this would definitely be something that we would take a look at in future deals. I don't think we have anything in our pipeline that represents something similar right now, but in the future, if we have something that's a similar structured deal, then it would be something we should take under consideration.
We, we actually will be coming back to the board because there are a number of properties that are coming to the end of their fifteen-year low-income housing tax credit cycle. And each one, though, has to be evaluated on its own merits because all of the deals are, are obviously very different. This one, we think, is really advantageous primarily because the building is new. And so others that would be coming, would be coming, would be at least fifteen-year-old properties that have to be reinvested in. And we're going to be bringing one forward to you pretty soon, Henson Ridge. It's going to look very, very different from this one. But this Arthur Capers, we think, because, again, it's a new building and it is fully occupied and it has basically the operating, the revenue cover, the cost. And it allows us to preserve affordable housing for a couple hundred seniors. We think that this is a very advantageous deal, and we ask the board to support it.
Thank you, Director Donald. Commissioner Council, I see that you have a question. You have your five minutes.
Yes, my question, was the senior, Arthur Capers Senior underneath of the same options that we did the Bixby, which was the CBE five? It was one of the first ones we've ever done, but was that under that as well?
It's called the EB five, not CB.
Okay, EB five.
No, we didn't use that same financing structure for Arthur Capers.
Okay, thank you.
Who is speaking, please?
Commissioner Council.
Right, who just answered him?
I'm, 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 all right, Commissioner, it was Senior Development Manager Andrea Gould. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Council. I wanted to continue down my list. Commissioner Ortiz, do you have any questions regarding this resolution? Any comments?
I'm clear.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickler?
The director answered it because basically, was this deal be as, as good of a deal if the building wasn't new? And Director Donald kind of answered the question for me.
Thank you. I think I already asked you, Commissioner Belcheckio, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I was just going to mention or ask, actually. So what's the income level for the residents who are in this building?
Negative thirty percent, correct?
Yes, Sasha, can you confirm that?
It's.
If you all can remember to announce your name when you're speaking for the.
This is Alexander Serna, the developer manager with DCHA. Yes, this is an ACC contract, so it's all, all are very low-income tenants.
It's what? I'm sorry, we, we didn't understand you, you, what did you say?
Very low-income tenants, which is thirty percent and below.
Thank you.
And, and this is the Andrea Gould, Senior Development Manager. Public housing can go from zero to eighty percent AMI.
Okay, but at this point, it's zero to thirty at this building?
It, 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 it's a case-by-case basis, but it can go up to eighty percent. It depends on the resident, and they only pay thirty percent of their income.
Okay. No, because I know previously we've talked about, you know, the mission of the board and, and just, you know, an emphasis on making sure that we serve residents who need us most. And so it seems like what you've brought to us is a, a building that we can have in our portfolio, which actually allows us to do that. So I just wonder, just kind of, I don't know, Director, if this is for you or just more broadly, how this kind of fits into our, our mission? I think that's been a little bit lost as we've kind of gotten to the details.
No response?
I'm sorry. I, I thought you were making a statement, Commissioner. Yes, I see. I mean, it's clearly, again, it allows us to, to preserve affordable housing. I mean, I guess the option would be for this developer to go sell this. I mean, I guess the option would be for this developer to go sell this on the open market and we lose and it could be converted to market rate housing and we'd be in a whole different scenario. So.
Commissioner Slover, you stated in the chat, you wanted to make an amendment?
Yeah, I just want to, just to be clear though, I do think it's a good deal to buy, but there is a fifteen year requirement for affordability. So market rate conversion couldn't take place for fifteen years and we could convert it in fifteen years if we wanted to. So.
Thank you for that correction.
I just want to make, I want to go back to what I talked about before, which is, you know, this resolution, we keep saying it's to authorize the amendment of the ACC contract. And I would actually like to go back to the zero to eighty thing, but that's another time. And also to Commissioner Falchikio's point about the mission, I think we should have a board discussion about the mission. So thank you for bringing that up. The resolution in the summary is saying you're asking for approval of assignment and assumption of mixed finance documents and loan documents. That's more than an ACC amendment. So I guess that's why I would like to see in the body of the resolution, the reference to this twelve point seven million dollars. So that it's clear what all the components of this deal are. And I don't see the seventy thousand one hundred dollars in here either. Because I thought it was just for the ACC. But in the lead up, it says more. So I'm just trying to find out what authority we're trying to get in this. And I would ask that we incorporate the numbers into the resolution.
Andrea, can you clarify? Or and or agree to the
Yeah, we can make the publication. As you said, this is really for submitting to HUD to amend the existing HUD documents, including the ACC. We can clarify. That's what the purpose of this resolution is, is to submit to HUD so we can amend existing documents that exist.
But your summary says you're asking for assignment and assumption of mixed finance documents and loan documents.
As Mr. Sarah said, that loan agreement, it does stay in place. It is up to us to decide how to deal with it.
Right, I want it to be in the resolution. If you're asking for approval, if you're asking for approval of something, it should be in the resolution.
Ms. Powell, can you please identify yourself?
I'm sorry, Andrea Powell, interim general counsel. So Mr. Sarah said that the loan stays in place. You would like us to include that in the resolution?
Because we're assuming it, yes. The loan is no longer on, we're not lending it. Now we're assuming the loan. It has to be represented in this transaction. It has to be represented in what we're approving somewhere. It's twelve point seven million dollars.
All right, we will make the revision.
Ms. Powell, can you, can you please clarify what we're asking the board to vote on? I think there's some confusion. I'm confused now. Three, is it for the documents to be submitted to HUD for the amendment of our CC? Can you explain exactly what it is? And is it, does that require including the dollar amounts of the transaction? Just let's make sure that we're direct with the board about what we're asking them to vote on. And then if there is a request for an amendment, then the board can move forward with
Thank you, Director Donald.
Just to be clear, the title of the resolution says authorizing closing documents for acquisition of Kapper Senior One.
I just want, right, I'm asking Ms. Powell to clarify that because it seems to be a little bit of confusion about exactly what we're asking.
I agree. We are asking for authority to obtain HUD approval and execute any amendments for the existing documents related to HUD as well as any existing loan documents. So there's only one. So we will make that clarification.
We're voting on the amended resolution, correct?
That will include the information that Commissioner Slover asked. The definition of evidentiary documents on the first page of the resolution.
Just to be clear, you're going to add a reference to the twelve point seven million dollar loan that we're going to be assuming.
Is that accurate that we're assuming?
I just want to clarify with John. Are we assuming that loan, John?
I need to check the amount, but yes, absolutely. It's a notes receivable. That is, you know, that is going to be assumed by DCHA when the transaction is completed.
I assume it's a lot more than twelve point seven.
By the LLC, right? It's, you know, they'll be owed from the new entity.
Right. Yes. So the new entity will take over from the old entity. Exactly.
And so it'll be owed to DCHA?
Correct. So on our books, it would still look like a notes receivable. But on the new entity books, it'll be a liability.
Is that, is that clear for answer the question? I think we need to hear the resolution. No, it's not owed by the housing authorities, owed by the new entity. And then DCA could then decide how it wants to handle it.
Then you need to reference in the resolution that the debt's being transferred to another entity. I mean, my point is there's zero reference to anything we've done today. It is twelve point seven million dollars, which is now probably thirteen or fourteen, thirteen. I don't, it's a interest is accrued every ten years. And so it's more than that now. So I just want to keep an eye on, on the twelve point seven million and make sure we're noting it somewhere.
That will be incorporated into the resolution. Is that correct, Ms. Powell?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So Madam Chair?
Yeah, I think we just need to be clear. I see you, Commissioner Hoffman. I see you. I see you. I just want to make sure we're clear on what the resolution actually is that we're voting on. Is it possible for us to get it read so that we're all clear? Am I correct, Commissioner Hoffman, Commissioner Council? I think there's a little discrepancy around what we're actually voting on, on the resolution. So Andrea, is it possible for you to read it? So that we're clear?
If I may, my concern is the resolution is titled to authorize closing documents for acquisition of Kapper Senior One. We are not acquiring it. The special entity is acquiring it. So I think everything about the resolution, it's a great idea and it just hasn't been written correctly. And I don't want to vote on it till it is.
We're clarifying that now, Commissioner Hoffman, so that we can move to vote and get the actual acquisition.
Including re-titling.
That was the resolution that the DC Housing Solutions Board voted on. Is that not correct? It was, the acquisition was just approved. This is about the ACC amendment. So.
Right. So it's not acquisition by us.
Who's the members of the board? Of DC Housing Solution Board. Who?
All the same, the same as DCHA.
All of us.
Let the minutes, let the minutes reflect that.
So Andrea, you got to read the, Madam Chair has asked that you read the resolution.
As amended.
So, authorizing, Resolution twenty-two dash oh one. Would you like me to read the entire resolution?
Please.
DCHA and HUD entered into consolidated annual contributions contract dated November twenty-third, nineteen ninety-nine. Whereas Authority and HUD entered into a mixed finance amendment to the above referenced ACC for the project known as Arthur Kapper Senior One. On September nineteenth, many of the projects improvements were destroyed by fire and subsequently restored by Kapper Senior One LP. The Authority and HUD entered into a First Amendment to a mixed finance amendment to the ACC to evidence the casualty of rebuilding. The owner entity and the Authority have agreed to transfer the property to a new owner entity created by a DCHA affiliate. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Directors of DCHA here adopts Resolution twenty-two oh one to authorize ED to submit to obtain approval from HUD to transfer Kapper Senior One to an affiliate DCHA and to execute the evidentiary documents to effectuate the foregoing. And then we would add, and such documents will include the transfer of the existing loan of twelve point seven million dollars from Kapper Senior One to the new affiliate Kapper Senior LLC. So. First page of the, it's referenced on the first page of the resolution, but we can add it as I just read into the last page.
Commissioner Slover, you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like DCHA is buying and transferring to the to the subsidiary based on that latest paragraph.
Correct.
So we are in fact authorizing more than the ACC contract. And therefore, that's why I wanted in the actual resolution, because what I'm learning here is that if it's not in the resolution, then that doesn't exist. And so when it's in the write-up, it's not relevant. It has to be in the actual document.
So what I added was to put it at the end of that resolution, right, into the transfer of the twelve point seven million dollar loan?
No, I appreciate that, but you guys have held strong that all this was doing was approving the ACC contract transfer, but in fact, it's not. It's doing a lot more.
So now we've amended the, we've added additional language for the resolution to go on that last page.
Thank you, Andrea. If there are no more questions, I'm going to move to actually take a motion for this vote.
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Andrea, I mean, Alithia, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland? I didn't hear you, Commissioner Strickland.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council?
Yes, with the amendment that was just read.
Thank you. Commissioner Falchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz-Gow? Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Gasterie?
With the amendment as read, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
Yes, as amended.
Thank you. Chairwoman Bussi Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have eleven yes. The resolution is approved with the amended language.
Thank you. We're moving now, Director Donald, to Resolution twenty-two oh two to authorize services for construction management.
Yes, and thank you, Commissioners, for supporting that resolution. So John Springfield, this was the one that you started to introduce originally. So can you please reread the title and give a brief description of what this is?
Yes, Director. So the purpose of this Resolution twenty-two dash zero one is to authorize the execution of a contract for construction project management services for DCHA. And with this particular resolution, the contract is to provide onsite construction management for staff to coordinate, manage and oversee DCHA's rehabilitation and our new construction operations within our capital program. This is a three-year IDIQ contract. IDIQ is indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract for two point six million dollars. And it's funded through our district funded capital program funds. Why we need these services are it provides critical construction management experience and it will help our internal staff build our capacity within our capital programs portfolio. It enables us to have specialized experience that's difficult to get within the public sector and it also helps us build internal capacity within DCHA with our full-time staff. And what I mean by building capacity is we will be pairing these contractors with our internal staff for knowledge sharing and capacity building. We will, the key staff that we will have on this contract will be a senior project manager, one senior project manager, which will be a professional with over seven years of experience. Then we'll have two project managers that have between three and seven years of project management experiences, followed by a construction inspector that has extensive experience in multifamily building construction. I can turn it over to
To Ms. Bond.
Good afternoon. This is Lori Bonds, Vice President of the Office of Administrative Services. In an effort to assist the Office of Capital Programs with their effort for the actual project managers and construction inspectors for this service, our office issued a solicitation, again, for the, again, construction, senior project manager, two project managers and a construction inspector. That was issued in September with a closing date in October for, again, this solicitation and not only the Washington Post, but the Times, LTPO Latino, Hill Rag, Washington City Paper. We issued it directly to five firms as well as to DACD for our Section Three vendors as well as to, again, the DSLBD firms for any CBE members. We had six proposals that we received after having a question and answer period and our pre-proposal conference where we were able to explain and present the information as far as the solicitation was concerned. The solicitation, again, proposals were reviewed by three members of the staff. And based on that, it was based on firm experience and capacity, staff planning, price proposal as well as references in their Section Three compliance. We received, again, six proposals in response to that. They were McKissick and McKissick, JDC Construction, USource, Kramer Consulting Services, Potomac Restoration and Privay Demure Incorporated. Based on the proposals and the results of the evaluation process, DCHA has determined that each of the respondent's proposal met the technical requirements. However, McKissick and McKissick were the highest scoring as the most responsive bidder. We have reviewed the system of award management for federal government as well as the district's excluded parties list and McKissick and McKissick are not listed. McKissick is a woman-owned and minority-owned firm that's nationally recognized. Based on their Section Three compliance, they have committed to hiring individuals to be able to assist with this project. In addition, they have also committed to opportunities for apprenticeship and internship programs. Therefore, we are recommending an award to this firm, again, as Mr. Springfield indicated, for a three-year term with a minimum award of twenty-five thousand up to a maximum of two point six million dollars. Any questions?
Commissioners, we're going to do the round again. Each Commissioner has five minutes to discuss any questions that they may have for the staff before we go into a vote. I'll start with you, Commissioner Hoffman.
Yeah, I have a question and I'd like the person who answers it to identify himself or herself. Do we have on our staff currently somebody in the title of senior project manager, project manager and construction inspector? Or is the plan that we will hire people into those titles so that they can work with and learn from the contractor?
Thor, can you answer that, please?
Sure, John. Hi, Commissioners, Thor Nelson, Associate Vice President of Planning and Design. We currently have construction project managers and inspectors. We currently have construction project managers and inspectors on our construction staff. And these positions, as we have said, will work with those existing staff to help increase their skill level and knowledge base.
Don't have a senior project manager on staff?
We have a senior construction manager on staff currently, yes.
Oh, okay. And just to clarify, I know I've asked the question before, but not in a public meeting. These four people will be contractors, not employees of the Housing Authority, correct?
That's correct.
Lori Bonds, that is correct. Sorry.
Nothing further.
Okay, Commissioner Van Gostery.
The Section Three component. One thing I do have in common with Councilmember White is making sure that the single-member district in which the work is being concentrated on is the first group of public housing and housing choice voucher residents that are selected or interviewed for the position before it goes citywide. And our competition sometime is DOE with empowerment. So, one, how can you, Brendan, you have to set up some type of template or monitoring and tracking for all of the vendors who are Section Three. This is only the weekly state one in our head, and we talked about this. So we need a form, and that form could be done maybe no late than ninety days. Where the form is going to show all of the Section Three vendors from day one, whoever they're supposed to be. Okay, then the categories of how they're supposed to be hiring Section Three applicants when they hire them. Okay, then who's tracking when we get fired or we get laid off and that slot is still open for a public housing or ACVP person? Who's tracking and monitoring to make sure that our rights are not falling down the loop on that because we wouldn't know? And somehow, in your monthly report, Section Three needs to.
Commissioner Van Gostery, we lost your last statement. I don't know if you muted. We lost you at her monthly report. That's all we heard.
Yeah. Oh, so what I'm saying is in that monthly report, we need statistics to show how many people in that single-member district was hired, or how many people in that ward was hired, how many was fired? What's the recruiting method when someone is fired, how someone else gets hired? We need to know some of those dynamics so that we can keep up with what's going on because Section Three have moved real, it's gone so fast that we don't know our previous vendors. We need to backtrack and see, do they still have people working for us? So this is essential. It's still to keep moving on because it sounds good, because it sounds good to me, even though they want to hire one of us or train us or apprenticeship us, but monitoring us and keeping the flow just like a temp agency to keep us at it makes it works, it fixes it.
Yes, we will provide a Section Three report. Yes.
That's good. Any other comments, Commissioner Van Gostery? Thank you for that. That is something good. We all should know that. Any other questions or comments relating to this resolution? I see you, Commissioner Strickland. I'm doing a round robin, you guys. I'm coming to you. If there's nothing else from you, Commissioner Van Gostery, Commissioner Slover, you have your five-minute round.
I appreciate it. So about two years ago, the previous executive director brought a resolution very similar to this to the board. The board turned the resolution down because they were concerned about building, not bringing the capacity in-house because of the volume of work that we had in front of us. I'm not sure, I'm not aware of any staff that was brought in on a temporary basis, so who's been, it sounds like we have people in the agency who fill all these roles currently. We're just looking to add additional bodies on the short-term basis for three years. So one of the pushbacks two years ago was why three years? This is like deja vu all over again. So we said we could certainly migrate what you're talking about, which is a reasonable approach, which is to say, if we don't have it today and we have a real need, why not invest in somebody else's company for a year and migrate that talent over? So three years is a long period of time. So that causes me some concern because in this business, the more you distance yourself from the work, in other words, when third parties are doing the work, the more you distance yourself from the day-to-day execution and the less control you have over the final product. So those were my concerns two years ago. They're still my concerns today. It's just, it's hard to spend this much money to build somebody else's capacity when we so desperately need it ourselves. And it's not like we didn't know that this work was coming. And so I'm just wondering why back in August or September or June or July, when we knew this was coming, we didn't go procure these people on our own? More of a comment than a question because I only have five minutes. So it leads me to a question, which is when the firm, when these firms applied, responded to the RFP, did they supply names and resumes of the four people? Do you know who they are?
Oh, I'm going to ask Ms. Bonds to respond to that, but I do want to correct one thing or make sure that everyone is clear. When I came to the board with the plan or mentioned several months ago about how we were going to build capacity within Office of Capital Programs to move all of these projects, it was a both and. It was building, adding additional staff, which we have done. And John will give the list of the new positions that we have added within the Office of Capital Programs and this construction management team to augment. So the, and I came to the board, I told you that we had gotten approval from the City Budget Office to use two million dollars from the capital, the fifty million dollar capital allocation for operations, which DCHA had never done before, although it is pretty typical for other agencies to do that. We put together a plan that included additional staff positions and additional, and then this construction management piece. So we have already started and we have hired, and you've already met several of the new staff members that are part of OCP, including Brian Butler, who you met in the brown bag, who will oversee this team that will sit side by side with the staff that are doing the work, the rest of the work, as well as an assistant vice president. I'm scrambling for the positions, John, as you're going to pull those up. Over development, we created an architectural position we have created and recruited for in the process of hiring about six positions. So this is part of the investment in the Office of Capital Programs that is absolutely needed in order to move on all of these projects.
Did they provide?
Thank you, Director. And yes, we've added an AVP of construction, Brian Butler, we've added.
I'm sorry, that's not the question. I'm questioning the four people that the firm is going to bring to the table.
I will go to that. I just wanted.
Identify them?
This is Lori Bonds, Vice President of the Office of Administrative Services. Yes, Commissioner Slover, they actually had to provide resumes of all of the contractors that they were putting forth based on their actual expertise and experience to be able to be qualified.
So, you know, my consternation again two years ago is the same as today, which is it's a lot of money to invest in external resources that should be invested internally. We had plenty of time to build this capacity. We had months to hire people. And I think that's the direction that we should have, we should have, we should have taken. So that's, that's my two cents. Thank you.
And this is John Springfield. Slover, we have hired internally Brian Butler, another project manager, as well as an urban designer. We are on staff within OCP. And again, the amount of money that we spend can vary per year, up to, we anticipate around eight hundred thousand per year. However, we will be pairing our internal staff with these, with these contractors so that it's a knowledge share. So that's where the knowledge base, and a lot of these positions have specialized skill sets that we would not have been able to acquire within the last two or three months within the public sector.
Then that begs the question, was this a requirement of the money? To bring in an outside firm, or was that, was there a string to the money, or?
No, it was not a requirement.
Strategy. It was a strategy to get, to build a capacity and the, and as you said, some of it is bodies, yes, it is, to have people to move this work forward. It was a strategy to get, to make sure that we are able to get the money out of the door, make, invest in the projects that we need to do, and you know the body of work that we have available. And I will say, going back, since you like to go on record, that we only had spent a fraction of the allocation in June when we got here, and the city was threatening not to fund the full amount in fiscal twenty-two until we put together a plan that the city council felt confident in, the mayor's budget felt confident in, and the chief, Office of the Chief Financial Officer. They came together to say, we believe this is the right way to go forward, and if you can demonstrate that you can start delivering on these projects, we will continue an investment. That already is worth twenty-two million dollars from June to August, and it is based on having a strategy. It was our strategy. It wasn't their requirement. We came to them with a plan, and this is a plan that all of the experts who charge of our financial fortunes felt confident in.
Well.
Thank you, Commissioner Slover. I'm going to let you make these final two points. Thank you, Director Donald. Please, you've exceeded your time, but please go with your last two comments so I can get the other Commissioners the opportunity to ask questions.
I'm done. Thank you. I appreciate the offer, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio, do you have any comments? It's your turn.
No, I think that, you know, as the Director said, I know there was consternation about not being able to utilize all the resource, not just because we want to make sure that the resources are all used, but also because, you know, our residents demand it. So if the, if the staff is coming to us here to say, let's augment our staffing so that we can do more and actually spend these capital dollars that we have to improve our housing stock, then I'm going to support this resolution. So I'll, I don't necessarily have a question on that. I know that a couple of years ago, we weren't ready for this. But also a couple of years ago, when that resolution came before us and it didn't pass, we also didn't have this investment from the district. So now we have this investment from the district. If we're going to keep getting it each year and obligating it and then actually spending it and improving the housing stock that we have, then we've got to get this capacity online. So thank you, Chair, for the time.
Thank you. Commissioner, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Strickland.
And one thing I just want to add, in addition to the staff that we've brought on board, we also have additional positions that are posted for internal full-time positions within OCP. So that's something else that we want to add in regards to our capacity building. We are bringing on this contract, this consulting firm, as well as we've hired three full-time staff, as well as we have four additional positions being posted within our Capital Programs Department.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz?
First, thank you, Director. That was a strategy, actually. In a, I really
You're buffering, Commissioner Ortiz. We can't hear you clearly. I'm sorry.
I just want to bring. Yeah, and just also, I just want to just thank Ms. Bagrosi to bring Section Three and sort of that, sort of I can see that being a great, great piece of information to have as a report on Section Three. And then one thing I do want to bring is I, I see the value in this strategy and being able to bring someone, because as hard as it is now to be able, I know that I have my own difficulties in having the right hire, to bring expertise right away, because to be able to do something in-house and the amount of work, I can see this being a great, a great win. So I just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Council, it's your five-minute round.
A great job, Commissioner Ortiz, a great segue for me. The capacity building, I can see, we're four years behind in things. We're really, we're almost like maybe twenty years behind in giving our constituents what they should have. And then you have to understand, we're going through the pandemic, and then people are only going to give you what you pay for. We weren't paying high scale. We didn't have the money and the capacity building in our pocket. Now we have it to reach out to the best of the best to bring them in and have them at least the first contract of three years to work, to have our own work side by side with them to learn what's out there, to do the capacity building so we can become independent and hoping we will learn how to be our own construction company and build the little one that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Council. Commissioner Strickland.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I also agree that the strategy, I think, is solid. Just a couple of things, just comments on it. Is, and this is to you, Director, are there particular projects that these contractors will or will not work on? Is there like a delineation? Is it just the government, the local government-funded projects, or are they assists across the portfolio? And then the other thing is just, what does good look like and how are we going to evaluate them? Are we going to do a snapshot in a year to see if projects move faster? Were they more on time or on budget? You know what I mean? Just, did they have less issues? So just wanted to see like, how are we going to measure success with these four to see if this is a model we continue? I disagree with Commissioner Slover on putting a particular timeline on it, but I do agree with him on, are we going to get the best bang for our buck? And is it a good use of our resources? And the only way to know that is if we evaluate, have some sort of measurement of how we measure these things.
Great question. Springfield, can you respond in terms of, I believe they are going to be working on projects across the portfolio, but can you please verify that? And then how we're going to be evaluating?
So in terms of valuation, we're going to be evaluating them almost similar to how we evaluate our full-time employees. There will be quarterly semi-annual performance metrics that we'll use to inform them of the progress and we'll essentially look at that in regards to the project schedule. As you know, in construction, Commissioner, there are milestones that we have to meet, and if we're not meeting milestones, that will be very quickly indicated if we fall behind on projects, and then we will let McKissick and these contractors know that. So that's the second part of the question. The first part of the question is, what was, I'm sorry, what was the first question?
Projects, are they going to be restricted to just the city projects? Are they doing the revitalization work?
They will be working, they will be working across the portfolio. Not, they will be working across the portfolio, and however, we will start them out, I think our plan with our, is to start them out on the larger-scale projects that are above a certain value.
Yeah, this, Thor Nelson, Associate Vice President of Planning and Design, just want to be a little more context on what they'll be working on. This team will be specifically focused on large rehabilitation projects. So what you looked at in the FY twenty-three to twenty-eight budget that we presented to you two months ago, those are the projects this team will be working on. Our current team of contractors, or of employees or contract, will be focused on repair and modernization work as well as be teamed up as junior project managers with these construction managers. So that's how we will balance the work and divide it up.
That, and just there is that if it's so much work to do, will our, our staff have an opportunity to learn from this? And I think you answered that question, Thor, if you're going to be junior project managers teamed up with the, with the contractors. But, but I appreciate the information, guys.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee, do you have any questions? It's your round. Or comments?
I don't have any questions. Um, but I think it's been very helpful to hear the background and the perspectives from the commissioners and from staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner.
Thank you. I agree with a lot that has been said in terms of, I think it's a good plan. I think the idea of, of bringing in an outside consultant, a supplement, the existing staff, while we are moving forward and hiring additional people, I think is a good strategy and a, and a good approach. And certainly McKissick and McKissick is a well-known firm. They have a really solid reputation. They've committed to section three. So I think this is a good plan and I'm gonna support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris.
Um, I also agree with a lot that I've heard from the rest of the commissioners. And I agree that it's a great strategy moving forward with the contractors. So I support it as well.
Thank you. Can I now entertain a motion?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Alethia.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Counsel? I didn't hear you, Commissioner Counsel. Still muted. Can you try one more time?
Yes.
Okay, heard you that time. Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Gao?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Gossery?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chair Bussie Reader?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have ten yes, one no. The resolution is approved.
Thank you. Now we're gonna open up for public comment, but before we do, I want to remind our residents and our public comment chores that this meeting is a virtual meeting. We do have virtual decor. I'm gonna ask that we refrain from name-calling, disrespectful outbursts, rude comments, and disrespectful tone this year. We will not be allowing that. At the moment that it occurs, you will be muted. And if that behavior continues, you will not be allowed to speak at the public hearing, so at this public meeting. So with that being said, we can get started. Alethia, could you call our first public speaker, please?
Uh, the first person we have registered is Ayesha McNair. Is she on the line?
Ms. McNair, are you with us? Ms. McNair? Going once, all right? Twice? Okay, we'll come back to her, Alethia.
Okay, Ayesha McKeithen?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Please continue. Five minutes.
Okay, my concern is the communication with housing authority staff. Um, I have called more than several times to ask to have a new voucher. And the staff keeps telling me the same thing and I've been waiting a little over a year. And I don't completely understand when I already have a voucher and I'm a voucher holder, why do I have to wait to get a new voucher in order to move into more bare home place, apartment? So can y'all please explain that to me?
Hello? Yes, we hear you, Ms. Ayesha. Director Donald, did we hear the question? If she can get a response, please?
Yes, we will definitely follow up. We certainly need to understand, you know, her, her, her case and her situation. But we have Ms. Myers on here, who is our new senior VP over the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Um, Ms. McNair is taking notes and we will have immediate follow-up. Yes.
So when will we be able to contact Ms. Ayesha? Can we have, give her a timeline that she will be expected to get a return call? Ms. Myers?
Yes, I can go ahead. As long as I get the information today, then I can definitely have a turnaround term call within twenty-four hours. So.
Okay, so Alethia, can we make sure that?
Yeah, can I get her first and last name, please?
Alethia is gonna give it all to you.
We have it on the tracker.
We have it. We have it, Ayesha. We're gonna get it to you. Thank you, Ms. Myers. So Ms. Ayesha, you'll be contacted within twenty-four hours. Thank you for your, your testimony. Alethia?
Thank you so much. Thank you. The next person is Cynthia Thomas. Cynthia Thomas. Okay.
We'll come back to you. Go ahead, Alethia.
Um, Detrice Belt? Ms. Belt? I saw her on the line earlier.
Explain the muting when you're on the call. Maybe that could be an issue as well. I know there's a different process if you're muted and you're on the phone. How do you release that?
Is that star six to release the mute?
So if you're on your telephone and you're trying to testify, you have to press star six to release the mute. Okay, Alethia?
Yeah, but I don't see that she's still on the line. Um, next person is Paulette Matthews. I do see Ms. Matthews' name.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Okay, fine. Excellent. Happy New Year, everybody. Um, for some time now, I have been saying that maybe the resolutions should go second and the residents should go first. Uh, maybe Detrice is no longer on the line because maybe she's fortunate enough to be at a job and not actually working from home. So that could be the situation that's going on right now. So that would be nice to consider. Um, because when y'all go through the resolution, we sit here and we listen. Um, I'm quite sure y'all talk about the brown bag and probably since we're working from home, some of us who are fortunate to still have a job or whatever, and y'all are having these discussions. And so when it comes to us being able to get on this line and be able to discuss some of our concerns, we can do so without having to get off the line before we can address the issue that we have been waiting for, for such a long time. Um, I have some issues, but I choose not to, at this time, to go through them because I finally had the opportunity for tomorrow to be on a conference call that I have requested that will address my issues. Because I notice a lot of times when I am speaking, I get a little frustrated because of the nightmare that I'm going through, um, the policies and procedures of how this thing goes, the fact that you could call DCHA and you were here, their voicemail say that they will call you within twenty-four hours or the next business day, and that does not happen. I'm trying to figure out who oversees who. And then I sit here and I hear the executive director talk about things that she spoke on last year, about the gift of love and all this, that and the third. And, and I get it, those people who have had service for twenty years or thirty years and how now because of the COVID and the family members that have joined us and we don't seem like we're gonna get out that nightmare that they can't have like a celebration. Well, I feel some type of way within that whole conversation and demonstration because it's so many things that's out here happening and us as residents are actually going through it, not being able to really speak to the resident manager or having to make up now appointments and even appointments before there was this Corona mess and your situations do not get resolved. Uh, to have people come out to your house and say something is fixed and then when you tell them that it's not fixed, then they say it is and then they shut the city down and then they say what your problem is, is no longer an emergency because what they feel emergency is to them is different from an emergency for us. Because if you've been dealing with something since two thousand and nineteen, it's an emergency. Uh, hot water, overflow or no heat, yes, those are emergencies too. But you got to realize what an individual is going through without all the other mental stress, Corona, you know, family members getting sick, whatever the case may be. And, and y'all just go through this thing like, like it doesn't matter and all of our lives matter. And the same history of the neglect and, and all of that is constantly going on while people are still trying to adjust, deal with, a, 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 and move forwards in their lives to do things. So can y'all please stop hindering the process? Because we want more and I think that in two thousand and twenty-two, due to our, the history of DC Housing Authorities, you know, mismanaging, errors and mistakes, I know that's how we grow, but it's like enough is enough. And so even when people are trying to get transferred or this late, because I was on the housing list for twenty-one years. And, and, and I wasn't about just public housing, but if it's not enough housing, say it's not. Um, if you know you get ready to come to an apartment unit for development and you're gonna tear it down and rebuild it and you gotta fight to try to get, say that. Don't put people in those units that you know that you're coming for. I mean, even if it's two or three years down the line, they're still gonna come. They might have just left a place and have to go through this ongoing nightmare again. And it's not like the property are, are the best of the best because I don't know if it's because you don't do it in a timely manner. I don't know if it's because of the cheap product. I don't know if it's because people just don't give a good goddamn. I don't know. But what I know is that this history and this pattern, regardless of who seems to be putting these chairs, constantly repeat themselves, like the agenda is the agenda and this is how it's supposed to go.
Matthew.
Yes.
Matthew. We, first of all, let me, let me say this. I hear your frustration.
I'm frustrated at you as well.
You can be.
And I'm not gonna, I wanna say nothing nasty because I don't want nobody to block me.
What I'm, what I'm asking you to do is if you have a comment, you have a statement or a question.
I'm done. I'm done. I said my statement and you as well had somebody to call to say you was gonna call me and you haven't called me yet. So yes, I'm frustrated, but what I'm not gonna do here is sit and cuss and disrespect for nobody for you to block me. Because I have a voice and it got, it needs to be heard. I'm not gonna sit here and ask y'all about Burry Farms.
Thank you, Ms. Matthew.
You're more than welcome. You're more than welcome.
Thank you. Next person?
Uh, the next on the list is Ms. Shante High. Ms. High, you can press star six to unmute if you're on a cell phone.
Press, press star six nine to unmute, Ms. High.
Sorry about that. Um, uh, good day to everyone. I'm Ms. Shante High, President of the Council at Park Morton. Now to begin my testimony by assisting DCHA with some understanding. Psalms one nineteen, one thirty, "The unfolding of your words gives light. It imparts understanding to the simple." As a resident council leader, I'm always expected to be switched on, on for my residents, on for DCHA's beck and call, on for the DC City Council members, on for my children, my family, and on for my, my friends and my community. At what point do we leaders get to turn it off just to get some self-care, to deal with personal crises, to grieve and to celebrate? Why is it that when DCHA suffers at any point, the vacation responder goes on? Calls and emails are rerouted to another person and you get to have what we don't? Are we treated as such because we are volunteers? In the past, I have suffered a tremendous amount of family, friend, neighbors deaths. I'm, I'm currently homeschooling my daughter due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. My mother in the past two years has had appendicitis and two major open-heart surgeries followed by a stroke. My unhoused seventy-year-old veteran father upended my life by having to be relocated to DC. And for the past seven months, I have spent countless hours seeking services to get him housed and now becoming his caregiver. My oldest daughter attends college two states away and recently a propane grill exploded in her face. And as a reminder, in twenty nineteen, I survived being struck by a car to which I am still recovering from my injuries. These are but a few of the personal things that I've experienced that DCHA doesn't actually care about. I'm dealing with all of this personally while still leading my community, only to have my communication filtered by D, DCHA. I couldn't even reach out to all of my residents to alert them of the passing of three of our neighbors. I couldn't get them all the resources that I have available for them. And I too am carrying the weight of their burdens as well with having to assist them with fundraising to bury their family members because DCHA declined to help when asked. Yet we are the families you've collected rent from, from, for decades, but we can't get any help. Galatians six two, bear one another's burdens and so fulfill the law of Christ. However, if it were one of DCHA staff going through such turmoil, they'll be, they'd want some sympathy, compassion and understanding towards their situations. Why is there such a lack of compassion for the people? Matthew nine thirty, thirty-six, when you saw the crowds, he had compassion for them because they are, they were harnessed, they were harassed and helpless like sheep without a shepherd. As a resident council leader and as a resident, as a woman, as a mother and as a human, I have the right to be treated fairly, with dignity, respect, without discrimination, intimidation, retaliation or oppression, and without judgment. I cannot and will not and shall not sit by while DCHA continues to threaten my family with displacement. And as I wrap this up, Galatians three ten, for all who, for all who rely on the works of the law are under, under a curse, for it is written, cursed by everyone who does not abide by all things written by the book of the law and do them. I am Ms. Shante High, President of the Council at Park Morton. Thank you for your time.
President High, I sent you a message in a chat regarding the burial assistance. Would you please make sure we connect? Thank you for that. We appreciate you and we want you to know that your thoughts, your comments are not going unnoticed. Thank you. Alethia?
Thank you.
Um, thank you. The next person is Rosa Burbage. Ms. Burbage? I don't see her on the line. I'll move down. The next person is Peggy Disrow. Ms. Disrow? Okay, uh, Coris Lowry? You can press star six nine to unmute. I do see your name there.
Good day to you. This is Ms. Lowry.
Thank you. You have five minutes.
I would like to address the board. Um, I thank you for me, it was my name and my situation. So I'm not gonna go through a whole lot of detail, but I would like to talk about, um, what I was told when I was inquiring about emergency move. And, um, when someone called me back from one of the, um, meetings that we had had two months ago and, and told me that, um, uh, this started off the conversation well, you know, Ms. Lowry, I know what you want. Um, you want a voucher. Um, you can't get a voucher. You want a new place and anything that I offer you, you're not gonna want. Now, the only thing that I was asking, if we're talking about raising the standard of living for the residents, is it's a community that I can feel comfortable in, in a living space that I can do the same. Um, everything that I've been offered and the standard of living that I'm living in now, that I ask to be upgraded or either be the same. Um, I can say that that has not been the case. And so now I am, I have proven my case in terms of my situation and now I received a letter of a mandatory emergency move. So my question to the board is, I would like to know, what is the rules for a voucher? And what is the rules for emergency voucher? I know from my understanding that you have to be homeless to get a voucher. I've been that. I've been in a hotel twice, um, for my situation. Um, I also like to know with the emergency move and I like to know, does a ma- mandatory, um, letter saying that I need to be out of here in thirty days? And if I don't accept the place that I'm going to look at within that thirty-day moment that I have to evacuate my situation because my situation is no longer livable? So I'm asking the board. So I'm asking the board those questions, how do I move forward? I also want to tell, excuse me, one last thing. I also want to tell the board, in going to look at a place yesterday, I slipped and fell on the back stairs of the apartment building because there was ice. And, um, where nobody dressed it and came until this morning. So, um, I have been just in situation, at the situation. And I'm just asking, how do I resolve it?
Thank you.
Let me respond?
Please, if you, or you're someone from your team.
Sure. Now, we've had, um, multiple conversations, um, with Ms. Lowry. And the fact is that she is a public housing resident and, um, she does have some needs, um, to, some special accommodations. And that is our responsibility to find accommodations that meet her needs. And, um, the team has been working on that and that's what she's referring to, the offers of, um, units and other developments that would be able to accommodate her. She is not eligible for a voucher, but she's not on the waiting list. Or if she is on the waiting list, of course, the waiting list is, um, is frozen and we have to go in the order of the, um, the aging of the, 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 the dates that people have signed up for the waiting list. So our responsibility and what we've tried to do is to meet her needs for the type of unit she needs to accommodate. And, um, I think she's been frustrated because that does not include a voucher.
No, no, that's not, that's not the reason. I found places that said that they would take me. And you, and because it is said that they were voucher or ADA, uh, situations, um, I've called all over and finding today. And where they could meet my needs, you said that I wasn't eligible for any of those places. And they were the new places that we, they were, excuse me, we, these were the new places that you've been partnered with. We couldn't even have a conversation because it's like, it's just off the table.
Right. So you, you are eligible again for, um, an ADA unit that meets your needs in one of our public housing developments? And that's who we've been trying to match up for you, but it does not include a voucher?
I found a ADA unit and I called and I said then they said it wasn't on the list, but I talked to the people and they said they were. I've, I've found several apartments like that, that are new units. So I'm not, I'm not, yeah.
Okay. Um, I.
New people that were part of it.
That's right. How you want me to, what, me to continue in this public forum? Uh, Madam Chair, we have had multiple meetings and tried to explain that what Ms. Lowry is eligible for. It is within our public housing, um, developments, not in private or mixed use that we are, we do not own.
So Ms. Lowry, did you understand the director's comment? We, we can identify housing within our, the stock, the, the housing stock that we currently have, but not private housing. Would you like to have a conversation offline to discuss this further? But I think we've, we reached our resolve in terms of how we can support.
So you're saying that if I turn down this unit, I have thirty days to vacate this apartment because it is unhealthy for my family to be here? And if I have nowhere to go, what does that mean? That's what I want to know.
So Director, we're not saying she will not be placed anywhere for her.
No, we have identified a unit for her apparently that matches her needs within our public housing, um, properties.
Right. But the letter states that if I turn the unit down, that I have thirty days to vacate this apartment, Ms. Donalds. I have thirty days to vacate this apartment.
We can hear our ADA staff follow up again, um.
So, okay, Ms. Lowry, from my understanding, you, you, you do not like the unit that they're, we've identified.
I haven't, I, I am going to see it today and I'm supposed to be going to see it as we speak. I'm waiting to get off this call. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Once you see, no problem.
You're taking the time.
No problem. Thank you. Okay. Alithia?
Uh, Ms. Heather Day. Ms. Day, if you can press star six nine if you're on the cell to unmute. Let's see Ms. Day's name. I'll go on to the next person. Um, Mr. Umar?
Yes?
Please proceed, you have five minutes.
Yes, good afternoon. You are, uh, to present us the eight votes for the commissioners. And I think that the, uh, conditions that we were working, it was quite harsh, you know, due to the spike of COVID that's rising and a new spike, the other new spike that's causing, uh, or that's rising as well. And due to this cold weather and the snow that we had, I think it should be an extension when it comes to that, comes to the, uh, the votes, I mean, getting the signatures. Because for one, I think that it should be really actually reformed a little bit because it's kinda, to me, it's a little backwards that you have to get signatures and then, then, uh, be able to put out, uh, flyers or information. I said, I mean, the reason why, because when I went to one of the properties, right? The property, you know, I, I went to the property and I, I got a lot of flack from a lot of the seniors because, you know, they live in their apartment. So when you knock on their doors, you know, they won't wear a mask. You know, they want to have a general conversation with you and, and you know? And if you were explaining to them, look, I'm really here just to get my name to put on the ballot so I can come back and discuss issue with you, you'll get the door slammed on you, you know, because you, you stay sad. I don't want to hear it if you're not gonna hear me and I'm not gonna sign nothing. And then you got, for instance, uh, one of the, uh, one of the persons, uh, Ms. Janet Parker. She want, when she's getting sick, getting stuff signed on it, she's telling people that, you know, she's already basically in that position. So when I went to one of the property, they said they're not gonna sign nothing because Ms. Parker already been here. So she's already, then we already signed. And I'm explaining to them like, no, I'm not disputing her. Everybody's gonna be on the ballot, you know, to get on the ballot. We just need, I just need a signature. You know, it's a lot of misre- misreputation when it's coming to us going around, going around. And then you knocking on these doors, some of the seniors, you trying to get, keep the ink pen wiped down because you don't know they have COVID or nothing. You know, you got some of us like myself, I get bronchitis, so I get underlying health conditions. And it's like quite wrong, I might like totally wrong. I was out there yesterday experiencing that. And it is wrong for you to have, not you, it's wrong for that contractor to have us out there in these conditions. No one thought about COVID that was gonna kick back up and you inside, I'm going to seniors in disabled buildings. These are closed in confinements. Every door I knocked on, everybody want, didn't want to put on a mask. And they venting stuff coming out their mouth, you know? And how you think, I just don't understand why they even did it this way. I'm thinking that they should do it more so like how they did resident councils boards. Where you just go sign to get on the ballot, you make sure that you get all the information you have to get done from the resident manager that consists of the, the signage, the approval, and then the hundred and fifty-word statement, I mean, that you have that is need to be in fifty words or less in each one. I think that should be the reason. And then we should be able to, be able to, you, uh, go, uh, put out, uh, uh, signs up or whatever. Cause if we doing it this way right here, it is like totally backwards. Trying to get signatures from people that don't understand because the people, the contractors didn't explain this to the people that live in these houses. They have to be able to understand why they, they thinking that we're running now. They don't understand, we only just getting the, the signatures to get on the ballot. And I'm quite sure there's too many people that haven't done it, that said that they, that they would like to run. And I think it's a harsh environment to, for us to be in, to even just trying to get on a ballot, to even be able to put up a flyer. Half of us might die before we get to this point because the way the conditions are in these buildings. I went over there to Callum Miller to knock on a senior's door. This senior is confined to her bed, her door is wide open. And it was crazy. And I think that things should be done where it should be done different. I think they should postpone this. Give us some, some time because you, look, look what's even Monday, it's gonna be snowing again. I mean, it, it's just crazy how they got paid to just treat us any type of way. Cause if you ask them to knock those contracts, to knock on each door and give a flyer or ask them, look, this is what's getting ready to happen. They get ready to vote and, uh, uh, I mean, sign a petition. They are not gonna do it because they gonna see that some of these people opening their doors and they got the right not to wear masks if they in their own house. But when you ask them politely, look, you know, I'm, you know, I'm running for position, I, you know, if you put on.
President Umar. President Umar.
Yes.
I've allowed you to go way past your five minutes. I think you made, made your point, no problem.
Yes, my apologies.
I think your point, your point was made.
I was just trying to get a reply, please.
No problem. So you're asking us, it makes it, no problem, you're asking for us to change the requirements to actually become, to get on the ballot to, is that right?
Yes, my, my thing is.
I, I think I got you, I got you, I got you, I got you. I have to actually, um, now I have to check to make sure we have that authority and that ability. So I'll yield, uh, Director and to Alithia.
Sure. So, um.
Meet your line, Mr. Luther. Meet your line, Bo, please.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. What, uh, Mr. Umar is talking about, and this has been raised by several, um, um, at least resident council presidents, um, in meetings that I've had with them, is that, um, they feel that with, with COVID, um, and, um, we're still being in this pandemic, that the requirement to gather the signatures to get on the ballot is really onerous and, um, it puts everybody at risk. Um, they asked, raised that with me and I asked if I had the authority, um, to, um, to modify or, um, waive that requirement. I did not have the authority because that was determined by a board resolution that, um, for some reason, the previous administration, um, and maybe even the one before that, for the last two elections, it was not, after the resolution was passed, it was not put into place. Then we, um, in making sure that we gonna do this election by the book, we obviously looked at all the requirements and that is a requirement. So that, um, we have to adhere to that and the board expects me to adhere to anything that they approve by resolution. So that is required if the board, only the board can change that and that will require board action. Um, notice and all of the things that are required, um, for boards, for the board to change. I informed the resident council presidents in our meeting on December the twenty-ninth that they would have to raise that to the board, which would have at least given time for the board to consider it. Now we're really at the eleventh hour because petitions are due on this Friday. So I, yes, the board does have the authority to do that. Only the board has the authority to do that. I think, I don't know if it's practical, um, within this timeframe, um, given what the board would have to do with notice and a special meeting if the board was just going to do that. I will say this, in, um, my meeting with, um, I, I get an update on the elections every week with staff and independent third-party monitor. There are several, several people have turned in applications for the, um, the various positions. Um, although they have not turned in the petitions. So again, everything is due on Friday. The third-party monitor will have to certify eligibility for the ballot based on, one, the, the, the good standing requirements that are required by the property manager and then, two, the petitions. Um, I don't know what the scenario will be if there aren't enough people, that have not enough petitions. Um, that's, you know, this has never been addressed. And then the last thing I would say is that we did look over the last, um, three election cycles. And unfortunately, there is really historically only been a small number of people who have even applied and got, gotten on the ballot, even though they didn't have petitions, but like one and two for each position. And only, um, a, uh, average of about five hundred people who actually even vote in the resident, um, elections, which is a really sad statement. But just to give some context.
Well, I, I actually will have to yield to my fellow commissioners in terms of how we want to proceed on this one. Um, if we were to bring forth a resolution, they will have to change and the deadline is Friday. Um. Need to hear from you all on this one.
Um, Chairwoman, this is, uh, Commissioner Strickland. Um, have anyone, has anyone turned in? I guess it's the director. Has anyone turned in any, any, no one certified via the petitions yet?
No, they turned in app, applications. Um, I think three people have turned in applications, but, uh, no one has turned in petitions. That was as of Monday.
One second, one second, Bo. Any other questions from the commissioners?
What, what, what's the number of, uh, signatures required?
There are, um, three hundred signatures required for at-large and two hundred for the, each of the other, the family and the senior. And a certain number can, only a certain number can be from one particular development and then the others have to be spread throughout.
I would like to ask our, um, resident commissioners, are you all into actually having the same problem that Mr. Luther's having? So I've seen, I think, I've seen vice chair counsel saying yes.
It's a double-edged sword. It's hard to even get signatures for the petition because of COVID. As well as getting signatures for you to even qualify to be put on the ballot, period. And then you heard the breakdown, three hundred for me, two hundred for the rest. And you can only go over forty per, per property as far as your signatures.
So I don't want to dominate this conversation, but, um, traditionally this was done at a different time of year, correct? So, so there was more access to these properties?
This method, the way it's being done now is the first time that it has been done. As far as signatures that you need to actually have in order to qualify to be put on the ballot along with you certifying yourself by having clearance of being in good standard with the housing authority through your property manager.
Could, could you say more on the difference between the last time and this time in terms of just the signature part?
There wasn't any. You didn't have to.
So before, there was no requirement for signatures?
The only requirement, you had to make sure that you were in good standards, standing with the housing authority and that was signed off through your property manager, meaning no back rent, you weren't a nuisance, you didn't cause a problem, which redeemed you to be put on the ballot. And then the third.
So there was a requirement, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Then, then the third party would go on with setting up different types of scenarios where we would go property to property or we would always use, um, um, the, um, Sibley Plaza Senior Building as the hub, if you will, the headquarters for us to come out. Everybody didn't come out. But those who did come out, you would come out and ask your constituents questions and they would ask you questions, why should they vote for you? And then the process went on to every property and everybody voted, which everybody never did. You got, it's, it, it's, it's like a three-way. You have some residents that do participate, you have some that don't participate and you have some that don't care, period, to, to, to participate. They want to be left alone and just pay their rent.
Yeah. Just to clarify, it was a requirement. It just, the requirement was not enforced or it wasn't implemented.
Right. It was relaxed.
Had a resolution in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, um, Andrea, that required this. There have been two elections since then that, and that was not implemented.
And this is a request from our third-party monitor, correct?
No, it's not. The third-party monitor just researched the requirements for the election and preparing for the election. And they surfaced. election and they surfaced that resolution.
Understood. Commissioner Slover?
There was a requirement before, but it was never enforced.
It wasn't exercised.
And now with the weather being different than normal and COVID and everything else, with the requirement being enforced, it's presenting difficulties.
Yep.
Um, well, I, I think, I think it's something we should address because.
I agree.
Um, you know, if, 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 you know, not that the resident commissioners could weigh in on this because I think there's a bit of a conflict, but just to hear from them that it's actually, you know, for them themselves, obviously they're more, you know, that they're having difficulty would indicate that everybody would. Um, so I'm not sure what the answer is, but I just obviously think there needs to be some, 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 uh, relief granted here somehow.
I agree. Um, Alethia, what, what? What is it within our jurisdiction to do in this case? Do we have the ability to postpone the election for about longer time, reduce the number of needed, um, petitioners? Um.
Are you asking Andrea? Cause it sounds like you're asking Alethia.
I was, I was asking Andrea. Mm-hmm. If I said Alethia, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I meant Andrea. My apologies.
Yes, we, you know, we've looked at this and, um, I mean, if the board wants to adopt a modified procedure, that's certainly something you could do.
Didn't they reduce the number of people to run for the city council down to some
They did.
really, really low number because of the pandemic?
Yeah, I think they did, what, fifty?
Well, why don't we, why don't we knock it down to thirty and, and, and call it a day? I mean, it's a percentage of the original number.
So ten, what you're saying is a ten percent number for the at-large. So would that thirty number apply to, because remember it's two different numbers. You got a three hundred number and a two hundred number. So we need to standardize it. One number is three hundred for at-large. Is that correct, Commissioner Council? And then there's two hundred, okay?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure I'm correct. Commissioner Hoffman, you have a statement?
Yeah, I should, I don't think we ought to do this on the fly. I think people ought to turn in whatever signatures they've got on Friday and we ought to set up a meeting with the third-party monitor, whatever. But I don't think we're capable of sitting here and rewriting the rules. There clearly are people who've been out getting signatures. Um, and I, I don't, I, I just don't feel comfortable sitting here, first we've heard about it.
Yes.
Rewriting the rules. I, I.
Well-stated.
Would hope that the third-party monitor will accept whatever gets turned in on Friday and perhaps they can make a report to us with a recommendation. Quickly.
Is that legitimate, Andrea? Can we move in that direction as opposed to making a change at the moment?
The, the view they've expressed is they feel that they have to follow the procedure unless it's modified.
Well, we, I don't, I'm not just, I don't think we can modify it today. I, I think, I think I'm just trying to throw out ideas. Um, because I don't think we can, I don't think we could actually make a change, say, that would be viable or, or could, would stand. I'm just suggesting that my personal opinion, I think there was a, a question to the board. My personal opinion is that we should have some accommodation, um, for this and what that is and how it is implemented is up to, yeah, up, up, up for discussion.
Thank you. Um, Director Donna, I saw you were about to speak. Were you about to say something?
One thing I'll just want caution, one thing is that, of course, you know, the, the city council passed legislation that we have to have the election by March thirty-first. So I just wanna keep that in mind. Um, as it stands now, there's a little bit of slack with, with the timeline that we laid out. Um, but not, not a whole lot. So, um.
But legally, that shouldn't be, that should, that, that, that was confusing to me because if the ruling was they stay in the seat until there's another election, then the March thirty-first is arbitrary. It, it makes no sense.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out the legislation that they passed. I didn't understand it either, but, um, but we're, we will come back to you. We will, um, on Monday after the, um, independent, uh, after Friday's deadline, with a report on how many for each and, and then have the independent monitor either make a recommendation or give you options. But I do believe that it would require, just the interest of time, is more than likely gonna require what you don't like and that's a, an emergency port meeting, um, just in the interest of time. So even the meetings that we have, we have scheduled two weeks out, we'd probably be pushing it a little bit, but you, maybe you could add it on to that meeting. I don't know. We'll, we'll lay out the timeline as well.
Thank you.
Was it possible, sorry, Chair, is it possible that they could start already working on a draft legislation? I, I mean, reg, resolution? I like what Commissioner Slover is recommending and I could support that. If the council's done it, the city council's done it, then why wouldn't we pass that same courtesy on to, uh, to the housing authority of, um, uh, so I, I just think that, can they start working on the resolution now? Cause, uh, if, you know, only thing that's preventing us from, you know, from doing this is just procedural, but I think that we need to do something and I, I, and hopefully the third-party monitor will have a report for us. But I don't think that there're gonna be a lot of folks that's gonna certify and so why keep waiting on it so we can get some circulated, so we can get comments?
Commissioner Strickland, I, I do respect your opinion and your point. I don't wanna make a knee-jerk decision today to do that. I think we need to follow what our director has advised, allow the third-party monitor to get back with us by Monday. Let's at least see what petitions was able to be submitted and then make a decision before we come up with a resolution. It may not be necessary. So if we can put a pause in that, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Hoffman. I don't wanna make a knee-jerk decision on this call right now because we're uncertain of what others have been able to do. So thank you. Thank you, Bo. We appreciate you. Um, President Luther, we appreciate your time and bringing, bringing this up to us and we'll definitely follow up with you early next week. We appreciate that. Thank you. Um, Alethia, I know we have a couple of more testimonies.
Yes, the next person, uh, is Gloria Smith.
Good evening. How y'all doing?
Well, thank.
Can you hear me?
Half-minute. Yes, please proceed.
Yes, I'm calling because, um, I went to, uh, State D.C. program and, uh, we got approved for Rich O'Sisters' approval for, uh, November, December, which was a total of one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Okay, we were informed, we received email that said that the money would be sent to Ronald Smith, which is my husband. It was not sent to us. The money was actually sent to the, um, to Housing Authority, okay? Now, I spoke to Daniel and Daniel told me that the check was accepted, cashed and deposited on December the twelfth. I go back to my rental office. No, I'm telling the rental office now. We, we'll fix housing. I went up to the rental office. I got a printout of the rent because it was not paid. What they did was that they deposited two checks and then turned around and took the, uh, checks back out as a refer to maker non-sufficient funds. So we trying to figure out, how did he get a non-sufficient funds if it came from State D.C.?
I don't know, ma'am, but we'll be happy to look into it. We will follow up with you so that we can, um, trace and track your situation. Have you reached out to someone on staff already about this and didn't get a response?
Yes, we did.
Okay, then we will follow up with you and find out what, what has happened, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Y'all have a blessed one.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. The next person is Patricia Bishop. Ms. Bishop on the line.
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Patricia Bishop. I'm resident council president of Greenleaf. Always willing to step up for my tenants and myself and get in this good trouble. I want to bring to your attention of the board. Back some months ago, I asked about the apartments that had been redeveloped, remodeled, for the tenants to go into those apartments that was living in these horrible conditions. I have not yet received any information about that being processed due to the health of our tenants and our, the children and the adults living in lead and mold and other conditions such as no heat. Due to the fact that the statement came out yesterday for them not to turn their oven on and burn it because of carbon dioxide, but they have to suffer through these frigid temperatures of not having the proper heat that is required to be in each and every apartment. Radiator's not working. There are several tenants that have complained about this for years. Even with this new unit that has been built on this property out in this front yard for the tenant that are located right there to not have proper heat is not providing them with all the law-abiding laws that housing is required. So once again, I'm asking for the board to make a decision to move these people into these apartments that are still empty but remodeled and up and running, but vacant. Please look and consider our tenants here at Greenleaf, two oh three N Street Southwest. And I would like a response.
Ms. Bishop, are you available for someone on staff to follow up with you so we'll know exactly, um, who you're, how many residents, who you're talking about, whether they've already applied for transfers, just so we can make sure that.
Well, it's not the point of them applying for transfers off in the property. They want to stay on the property.
Ma'am, I understand. I just wanna make sure that someone's not already working on this or if this is something new, just so that we're real clear. So.
Not, as president, not to my knowledge, anybody has worked on it. I brought this up four months ago about moving these tenants into these units and no decision has been decided. They have called control, uh, central, the command center and gotten control numbers about no heat. Housing is aware of it for years through that control number and so is management with these people not having proper heat. But they pay their rent.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's no need for any further discussion. I'm just asking the board to consider it as a resolution and get it done that these tenants can live in a livable conditions, which is required by the law.
Right. And, and it's, we will, can we follow up on the staff level so that we're clear about?
Okay, you can follow up on the staff level about any conditions that these people are living in. Thank you and appreciate that. The second question, I have another question. I don't know if my five minutes.
No, you have time. Please continue. You're fine.
Okay. Is that when they have repairs in their unit, the incompleteness of compared repairs is unnecessary to put plywood up in y'all, in the halls located in this building into people's apartments without fixing the problem or even putting the sheet rock up there where I'm getting tenants telling me about, oh, it's flaking up from the paint because the job has not been completed. Or paint or plumbing work that is going on that people are literally in their bathroom and water's pouring down on them. To have a piece of plywood thrown up there and the problem has not been fixed for some months, that is inhable living. And I'll, I once again keep asking the board of commissioners to help management and any staff of employment to get the job done. That's why people are continued to live in these hazardous conditions. End of that comment. My next one is to ask the board of commissioners, have they even looked into the covenant on Greenleaf that only public housing can be built here? Not any developer can come in here and build homes for market rate of any kind and that this is to remain a covenant of thirty percent at, AMI. Thank you.
Good, good, Director Donna, could someone respond to that last thing? I've heard that covenant thing a few times now.
Yes, um, Ms. Powell looked into that, I believe, after the last meeting. Andrea.
Certainly. Um, good afternoon, Andrea Powell, interim general counsel. So all of our properties are required to have a DOT, Declaration of Trust covenant. Um, and so every time we do a transaction, we have to work through that covenant, get any approvals from HUD. Um, so every single property, we go through that process and so we would do the same thing for Greenleaf, um, as a part of the development. So every property has a covenant.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but to not be able to build any market rate as stated in our covenant that this, all this land here is to remain public housing, then why is a developer even implying that they are going to build market rate units, which is a violation of the covenant?
So we have to, every time we do a, a, a project, we have to apply to HUD for what the new project will be and we also have to, um, get board approval. So that's part of the process is we will submit the revitalization plan, um, with what will be built and then we have to submit it to HUD.
Okay, but your developers that are trying to develop here is stating that they are going to build property on this land for market rate and they cannot do this.
So without HUD approval and without board approval. So once we have, we submit, they will submit the revitalization plan in the coming month that will, um, have what would be planned to be built and then we would submit it to HUD.
So, so Ms. Bishop, I think what you're drilling down in on is that every time this board, uh, approves something like this, they are, uh, basically in essence altering and removing, requesting that the covenant be, uh, changed and therefore, uh, it, the change allows that to happen. Um, so we're basically altering the land use when we do these.
Yes, in order to redevelop the property, yes.
And that's what I'm asking not to go on through the board, for the board to acknowledge that this has not worked in any past, the dislocation, any of that that had been done in the past to not go on far as Greenleaf, tenants and covenant and land is involved in, because this is something that is unacceptable for everything that have already occurred with these developers and doing housing, continue to grant them to do this. What we at Greenleaf is asking y'all to not do this to us.
We're clear, Ms. Bishop. I, I.
So Ms. Bishop, listen, Mr. Vaylass, read. So what is your recommendation?
I think she made it clear.
In response to that, it was made clear when Ms. Walker sent in an email for us to find our own developers. What is, um, action to be made clear of is not have Greenleaf tenants go through any of this that have already been gone through, through different properties with the dislocation, the agreements that was made with developers and housing and HUD to not continue the same way because there's always has and always will be a problem on how this business has been conducted.
Look, I think you make a great point in pointing out that these actions alter the covenant and that the, the intended use of this land is being, um, altered.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. I think we all heard exactly what you're saying and, and it's definitely something that the board has to consider. Um, how we're making these covenants as we're developing these properties. The last thing we wanna do is displace the residents and you need to know that. So we heard everything you said very clearly and it's in the record and we will further discuss this before any further action is taken at Greenleaf.
Thank you so much.
And regarding the maintenance, regarding the maintenance, I've already been in communication with the director. We're gonna get on top of that immediately.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Bishop, I'm sorry, but could you tell me what units you're referring to that are renovated and empty? Are those on Greenleaf? What, what are?
They're, they're at two oh three N Street South. They're, they're at two oh three N Street Southwest. They're on the Greenleaf Mid-Rise extension where there are several units that has been renovated. For months and nobody has moved them. But like I asked months ago, for the tenants that are living in these worser conditions. To be placed in there, have their units fixed up. And return them to their units would be something that they were all, we all would be satisfied with.
Yes, these are likely make-ready units and I think I've, I've raised this with the board several times about how. There's been a disconnect and a kind of a, a misalignment in terms of timing where we have make-ready units that are held aside. For, um, development, for relocation, onsite relocation and development. But there's so much time has elapsed from when the units are designated and held out. And that's part of our strat, or will be addressed in our strategy as we're filling vacant units is to really make sure that. They're not held out for too long and that we are having that alignment much, much more closely. Um, much, much closer to when actual relocation needs to happen. So this is another example of that and some of Bishop is, is right on target.
But another concern.
I appreciate that. I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Quares. I appreciate that. But the tenants have been living here for numerous of years under these poor conditions in this apartment. A month of a vacancy of a unit that is not occupied by anybody should be considered for the tenants that has been paying their rent, living in these horrible conditions. Immediately affected before the end of the month. This should not be something that need to be dragged out over and over again. We lost a tenant due to the fact of the lead mold where her wall was tore down in her kitchen. And she passed paying her rent.
And we're going to follow up with you to kind of map that out. So we're, we're sure that we understand. Which units and which tenants you're talking about, if you have a list or if we have a list on our transfer request. So we're going to match all that up. My team is standing by to follow up with you. We understand issue from your break.
Thank you, thank you. We're going to move to the next, um, thank you, Ms. Bishop. We're going to, we actually have heard you. We appreciate this robust discussion and we will be following up exponentially. We agree with your comments. Thank you. Alethia?
Um, next is Ms. Wanda Davis. Oh, Ms. Davis. Can press star six man if you need to unmute.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes. Please proceed.
My name is Wanda Davis and the reason for me calling is because I wasn't able to get on the meeting last month. But the month before I was on there and, um, I couldn't get, um, you couldn't hear me. I've been living in this unit on the Montana property for the last eight years. And every year I've had a problem with sewer baggage coming into my unit. The last time that this happened was back here two months, two months ago. And, um, it started at four AM in the morning, six o'clock in the morning, I come downstairs and my unit is full of water. This has been, like I said, for eight years. Every year, don't know when it's going to happen, but it happened. I was so frustrated that I couldn't stop the water. I just left. When I came back, I had a big mess to clean up. It took them eight hours to get out here to find someone to come and fix this problem. Now, my other issue that I'm having is that I live in a four-bedroom house. Everybody is gone. The last person that left been over a year. Now, I've been trying to get her off of my lease for the last three months. And I've been, uh, very unsuccessful in getting her off. There's a thing that you have to go online that calls the work number. Even. The government can go on there. It is hard to get the information. Now, she's no longer working. So that means that until I get her off of my lease, the rent that I have to pay, I cannot pay it. I've worked for twenty years doing retail and I had to resign from my job during, after the, when I was able to go back to work. Because of this pandemic, because I have a health issue. I'm on disability now. So next month, when I get ready to pay my rent, I have to give them half of my social security disability to pay my rent. I've never been late with my rent since the pandemic. I've stayed on top of my rent. Never had to go and get anything because I had the money to pay my rent at that time. My granddaughter doesn't get anything. She had a job and was fired from the job and I did not know it. For the three months I've been trying to get this information. It's now no longer, she's no longer in the system. It's hard getting this and I can't understand why I can't get her off of my lease. I spoke to Ms. Hernandez yesterday. On December the twenty first, I called her. And she called me back. She did an email to Ms. Watson for her to give me a call. On top of that, just before I spoke to Ms. Hernandez, I spoke to Ms. McCray. Explained everything that I'm explaining to you all. And what she told me to do was put it all in writing, get it notarized and take it to the rental office. I asked her, if I have a problem, can I reach back out to her? She told me yes. I have texted her, I have called her and I'm not getting any response. It's messing with my health. I am a diabetic. I've gone through a whole lot within, here it is, this is just a new year. Last year. You know, I went through a whole lot. I lost a grandson. I didn't lose him. The mother did something to him and y'all have seen it all on the news, a two-month-old baby that was thrown away, which they cannot find. And right now with the stress and everything that I'm going through and now trying to get my granddaughter off of my lease when nobody lives in this four-bedroom house. But me and y'all can't help me. I am very frustrated. It is messing with my health. Every day I cried for three months. I have tried and tried to do everything. I even went online and tried to do this and there's no, she's not in the system no more. I can't even, I don't even see my granddaughter. And I don't know what else to do. What I'm going to do has to dodge from stress because y'all won't help me and pay for something that I cannot afford to pay. Is this what it's going to result to? Because physically and mentally it's destroying me. Because I can't get that count. All I get is I need a letter of verification that she is working or not working. And I can't get it and I don't know what else to do. So I'm reaching out to you all. I can't take no more. And it's not going to get any better and I've been doing this every day. Then you send me a recertification saying that I'm recertified, don't have to do it for another two years. But my rent is still the same, which I cannot pay. I can't give up half of my disability check to pay this rent when my rent is only going to be a certain amount that I need to pay out of that. But because she's not working and she's not living in my house, what am I going to do? That's why I'm reaching out to you all today. I can't take no more. I can't take no more.
Ms. Davis, this is Brenda Donald, executive director. I am so, so sorry to hear. Uh, of your troubles and everything that you said is unacceptable. And, um, to have eight years where your sewage is backing up and I, I don't understand that from a property management standpoint, but we will look into that right away. And I hear you on the recertification, so, um, which is now with property management. I'm going to have Ms. Nona Eve reach out to you tomorrow. So that.
Because right now it's been so bad that I'm almost suicidal.
No, I hear you.
Ms. Davis, that's not going to happen.
No, please, can you, I'm going to put, I'm putting the top person who is the senior vice president. To, to, um, call you and with her staff so that she can figure out exactly what it is we need to do to address your situation. And I just.
Well, she's not here and I, I just found out some information that I didn't know. I'm thinking she's still working and she's not. I called the job and it just so happened an employee was able to speak to me and give me information. Till I had to let, let her know who gave me the information, but let her know that she's been lying to me.
No.
Ms. Davis, we're going to, Ms. Davis, we're going to handle this.
Tomorrow.
Davis, we're going to handle this first thing tomorrow. Please hold on with us. We're going to provide you all the support you need. We, we, we got you. We got you. There, there, we got you.
And I'm so sorry that you, that you had to come to a board meeting and that our staff, we didn't follow up as we should have on the staff level. I humbly apologize to you and as the chair said, please give us a minute. Um, we will follow up tomorrow and try to sort through this for you, okay?
There are other resources, Ms. Davis, there are other resources that we have within the community that can support you as well. And we will let you know that tomorrow. Please give us until tomorrow. Just hold on for us until then, please.
Okay, because I can't take no more. I really can't. I can't take no more. I cry every day about this situation.
We understand.
We will.
We'll take care of it, Ms. Davis. Please give us until tomorrow. We're so sorry. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Thank you. Alethia?
Um, next we have our non-residents that are listed. The first is Daniel DePilago.
Daniel, are you there? Thank you. Commissioners, my name is Daniel DePillo with Empower DC. We've got a couple of questions and just a follow-up on, uh, the Stay DC piece. Ms. Gloria called me and we helped her fill out her application. They were told they would receive the funds. Um, sometimes the Stay DC letters make it seem like the resident will receive it. In this case, obviously it went to DCHA. We did confirm with D, with Stay DC, I spoke with Mr. Noah Adams at DHS. Um, about the status of this very specific payment and he did say it was received. What concerns me is that Ms. Gloria was not told that. You know, that the funds had been received by DCHA. And I'm wondering if this is a bigger problem where residents have gotten their, their rents paid by, by Stay DC. But have not been told so and are, you know, paying and essentially DCHA is receiving a double payment. Um, so I want to flag that as a concern. I don't, hopefully it's just something that Ms. Gloria is experiencing. Not that she should be experiencing it, but, um, it, it could potentially be a larger problem where folks are having to scramble to pay. When in fact, the rent has already been paid by Stay DC. So I wanted to.
I will say this, I appreciate that and, and, and we, we will look into it, but we're reconciling that, those numbers all the time, we live on a weekly basis. And I will say since Stay DC is to pay back rent, if someone is now currently paying rent, that's a good thing and it wouldn't be double. It would be paying current rent. So.
We'll save DC based current and future rent, if I'm not mistaken.
It's what period it's time. Yeah.
Yeah, and that's the case for Ms. Smith, so.
Okay, so no, we, we, we will reconcile that. I mean, we are reconciling on a regular basis. So this may be a matter of a, a lag, a lag in time. But, um, we're pretty much on top of that, but we are, we will look into as we promised for specific situation.
Thank you. Another point I want to make is this third-party monitor. I can appreciate that you guys will ask them for direction, but. If in fact, they have been the third-party monitor for these elections, when, you know, not even the board has said, I imagine that. You know, the housing authority was not following their own, um, policy or guidance on these elections. It may be time to look at getting a new third-party monitor. Um, so I will leave that at that. I don't know how long their contract is good for, what's it, but just something to flag for the board. It seems that it may be time to reevaluate.
That may be true, but that's really on staff, that's on the administration to carry out. So what the, the, the board's resolutions and to make sure that we're directing people that we contract with to do what we're, they're supposed to do. So, um.
Sure, but if I understand correctly, you had said that they were the ones that said, hey, you guys have this resolution about, you know, what needs to happen in order.
And we should have known that ourselves. Yep.
I, I feel like they should have said something too, if they're getting paid. Um, so I, I'd like to flag that for the board as well. And then lastly, uh, the virtual property tour document was shared with me that was, I guess, sent out in December, uh, of this past year. Could you explain what that document is and, and i- is it just kind of like a, a snapshot in time or what is that document being used for?
It's just a snapshot in time. Um, so I've, we should have it on our website. We don't, uh, um, property information on our website is, is outdated. So we did, um, um, a snapshot with some key data points on each of our properties to orient our new staff and our new commissioners. And, um, I shared it with the resident council, um, presidents, just in transparency and to say, hey. This is what, how we're talking about the properties in which you live. If you think we should add additional information, if something's not correct, let us know. That's all.
So it, it, it doesn't, or how does it figure into the transformation plan or any?
This is a catalog of each of our properties. So it's a catalog of each of our properties, the current, you know, a little bit of demographic information. And any projects or work that is going to be done in this next year. We're, will be coming back to the board and to the public with, um, a, a, a look at our overall portfolio, um, sometime in February.
Okay, thank you. And, and lastly, I just want to, um, I know there are new board members. And I, I, I know that this is very difficult work and a lot of times here, I feel like we talk about, uh, during the resolution period, we talk about big picture. But then when residents come on, we hear all of the small-picture stuff that is being missed. So, you know, it's a new year. I think we can all work harder to, to, to avoid the issues like we just heard. So I just wanted to put that in the ear of the new, uh, commissioners and, and just say thank you.
Thank you. Next we have, uh, Suprema Dowdy. Ms. Dowdy on the line.
May I just, in, in between, may I just ask? When, when the board received that virtual property tour?
Yeah.
Um, the board didn't receive it. We at the time, we, we did it for our new executive staff. And at the time, um, Commissioner Skinner was just coming on to the board. And we told him that we had various onboarding, um, activities that we were doing for the new team and he asked if he could join and he did. And we're happy to either walk through it with the board or make it available to the board.
Please make it available as soon as possible.
Coming right at you.
Thank you. Alethia?
Uh, Ms. Dowdy, you can proceed. You have three minutes. I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm Suprema Dowdy. Um, then that you only giving me three minutes when I've been on here for the last four hours. Um, I just wanted to know, why haven't I been paired with a unit and not been told what I don't qualify for? My information has been passed from Ms. Donalds, Ms. Shenita, Ms. Scott, Ms. Jones, uh, um, or Ms. Hernandez. And what results have I gotten? I was supposed to be paired with a unit when I first got on the call from Ms. Donald, as I was told. Hello? Yes, Ms. Donald, do you?
Director Donald, do you want me to?
Yes.
Take this one? So, Ms. Dowdy, you continue to be on our waitlist for a unit while you have been approved.
I've been on the waiting list. I've been on the waiting list for thirty-something years.
Un- unfortunately, that's a situation for a lot of people on our waitlist at this point in time. You have been approved for an age, a reasonable accommodation when you are, when you come up on our waitlist. And unfortunately, you have not yet come up on our waitlist.
But why haven't I come up on your waiting list? I've been on here for the last thirty years. What's the problem? What is going on with you?
A limited number of units and, um, forty thousand people on our waitlist.
Okay, I still, I am disabled, you know, and it's still a, a problem with me having somewhere to live. I'm laying on my friend's floor. I'm laying on my friend's floor. So what am I supposed to do? You all asked me to fill out for the emergency voucher. I have done that. Why haven't I received a letter yet? What's the problem?
So I don't have any information on the emergency housing voucher process and where you are in that process? I can look into that, but...
So my information will be passed to this person and that person still?
No, I promise that I, this is Rachel Joseph. I'm the Chief Operating Officer, and I promise that I will be in touch with you, Ms. Dowdy.
Okay, is this Rachel?
It is.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Ms. Dowdy.
Alethia?
Thank you. Next, Mr. William Jordan. Mr. Jordan?
Happy New Year and good afternoon. My name is William Jordan. I'm a part of the Park Morton Equity Team. I work closely with Ms. Hi. I wanted to ask a few questions, but also wanted to share. One of the reasons we created the Park Morton Equity Plan is because we wanted to be proactive. We didn't want to always come to the board complaining. What we wanted to do is to make sure the Resident Council had the capacity, along with their allies, to take care of business. And what I've experienced, rather than the authority supporting that effort, they're constantly fighting against it. But my questions have to do with Resolution 2118, the fourteen-point-eight million dollar grant that's supposed to go from Denpad to the Housing Authority, and I guess to the developers. So my first question is, of those dollars, oh, just by the way, there are only seventeen residents left approximately on the property. It was one-thirty-three, that no one should have been displaced until there was a bill-first unit. So I just wanted to always highlight that. But of that money, how much of that money will either go to the Resident Council or to resident needs? And how much of that money, if any, is going to developer fees? That's the first question. The second thing related to Denpad is I went online and looked up how much money is going from Denpad to the Housing Authority. And I have, one block is the Park View Community Partners. And since the beginning of this fiscal year, they've gotten three-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars. What are they doing with that money? And how is it impacting the project? And why isn't that money going to resident support or jobs to make sure that the residents benefit from that fourteen-point-eight million? Also, this fiscal year, the Housing Authority has gotten two-point-one million dollars from Denpad. What was that money for? So those are my questions. I'm trying to figure out why money is flowing, and residents aren't benefiting directly or indirectly. We're just getting, residents are just getting pie-in-the-sky housing that's always around the corner while they suffer displacement and are told their ideas for making it better don't count. Because we don't have time. We can't do, there's some rule. But when there's rule, when you want to change the rules for the Housing Authority's interests, you find a way. So thank you and Happy New Year. Hopefully, you understood my questions.
I don't have the Park Morton budget in front of me, but I know that the funds that were coming from Denpad would be going towards development, not developers' fees, which of course are part of development, but not fourteen million dollars. So if you, we can go back, and I'll be happy to look at the budget again and understand the purposes for those funds. But it's all for development, and as you know, we are not able to move forward with the first phase, which where everyone is primed and ready to go so that we can move this project forward. But there's some obstacles, and so that's where we are.
Okay, so going back to the question, so Park View Community, these are payments that have been made this fiscal year. So this money has flowed to the developer. And so my question is, do you know that three-hundred-and-twelve thousand, what that was for since October?
I do not.
Since our developer?
We will follow up.
And then, of course, the general question is, the other money is just General Housing Authority money. And we, that was two-point-one million. We don't know what that money went towards either?
Not off the top of my head, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Alethia?
Okay, so last on our list for non-residents is Mr. Scott Brown. Is Mr. Brown on the line?
Hi, everyone. This is Scott. I'm just, I'm a resident of Park View. I live about two minutes down the road from Park Morton and from Ms. Hi. Yeah, I'm just calling to voice my support for Ms. Hi's request that we've submitted to Director Donald and other members of the Housing Authority to have a unit on-site, two units in six-fourteen Morton Street, to accommodate her, her daughter, and her younger daughter, and her older daughter. Her younger daughter is seven years old, and her oldest daughter is eighteen. And according to DCHA's own policies, a child who is over the age of, I believe it's sixteen or seventeen, is supposed to have their own room provided. And because of a fluke in the policies or vouchers versus the policies for DCHA housing, Ms. Hi can get a three-bedroom unit if she takes a voucher, but if she stays on-site, she can only get a two-bedroom unit, forcing her two daughters to share a room, which I think is just ridiculous. And considering that y'all just sat here and almost considered rereading the rules for the elections, and that it seems like y'all are open to changing rules when it's politically expedient. We've seen that happen before. I don't understand why we can't make an accommodation for Ms. Hi to have two units to accommodate her daughter in a building that is going to be torn down in a few years anyway, that nobody's going to be moving into. The unit will be sitting there empty. So when we talk about people being on a waiting list for thirteen years, we have empty units that nobody's living in, sitting there. So I just think it's a bit hypocritical. And I also just want to name that we just witnessed a resident come on here and tell us that she's suicidal because of the treatment and lack of attention and lack of care that she's gotten. And if you think that that's the only DCHA resident, DCHA resident who's experienced that, y'all are kidding yourselves. So I just want to name that, like, the more that y'all get stuck on rules and bureaucracy and trying to follow protocols, instead of actually trying to make accommodations to serve the people that you are being hired and paid by our tax dollars to serve, the more you're driving more people to those mental health breakdowns and literally destroying people's lives. So I'm not being dramatic. This is real. You just heard it. And so I just want to name that, like, y'all can make this happen if you actually want to. And the fact that you're not to, and the fact that Ms. Donald responded this morning to Ms. Hi's email and said, "It's unfortunate that you continue to look to the past instead of looking forward," is just another example of that total hypocrisy and a lack of care for residents. So I hope that the board can step in and try to do something about this, because it's clear that Director Donald's not willing to. Thank you.
For the record, neither the director nor the board can change HUD rules. So that's a HUD rule that we have cited, and we've had many, many conversations. So I don't think it's appropriate to continue that in the board meeting.
Thank you, Director Donald. Thank you, Mr. Scott, for your comments, your testimony. At this time, we have no more public comments.
Dionne, may I speak? This is Karen Settles, the Chairperson of the Citywide Advisory Board, and I've been waiting patiently. I signed up, but I signed up too late. I was told that I signed up too late. So I got to thank you for signing up, but I didn't get the link, and I just got in. But I've listened to the whole meeting. So...
Ms. Settles, I'm going to respectfully give you, give you three minutes because you failed to sign up. I'm going to take the hit on this one. Please proceed.
Sure. So I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. And the urgency in me wanting to speak is about the elections again. And we have two sets of elections. That's the Commissioner elections and as well as the Citywide Advisory Board. And when we talk about time being of the essence, we're talking about not only of that, but through no fault of residents, this pandemic has taken a turn. This, this health emergency in this city, and as well as the weather, has turned some things around that none of us expected, to tell you the truth, but so we are here. I feel that what I, what I'm asking for is for the board to take a vote on pushing back on the election date. So, and I heard the conversation with Mr. Beau Luther. I heard what he asked to consider, but I'm still asking that we do the consideration. Mr. Sloba brought up an excellent point about the numbers. I also, before I go any further, want to thank Mr. Commissioner Vaughn Goshry for the dialogue that she had in the resolution that she was speaking on. But going back to what I'm saying about the election piece, we need more compassion served to residents and consideration for circumstances that very well have been illustrated today. But with this election specifically, we are in a pandemic emergency. And I'm asking that the board do take a vote. It would be really too late. It'll be like next Thursday if we wait for a Monday answer. So I'm asking for an emergency vote.
I understand, Ms. Settles, but we had discussed it. We appreciate your time. We're not going to be able to do that today. We don't want to make knee-jerk decisions that way. So we're going to move in a direction that we had just mentioned. And on Monday, we'll make a decision how we're going to proceed. We're not going to make an emergency vote at the moment, as stated by some of my fellow commissioners. They actually would like to hear what is actually resolved on Friday, what's submitted, and then we can make a decision from there. We're not going to make an emergency vote. Thank you, though, for the comment.
May I add that we don't allow the independent to make such a crucial decision on behalf of the residents?
Understood. I understand. Thank you so very much. Hearing, knowing that there are no more public comments, this meeting is, we're going to have our next scheduled emergency board meeting on the twenty-seventh of January at 1:00 PM. You all will be notified in advance, as normal. We thank you for your time. This meeting is adjourned at 4:22 PM.